All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And ask Stacy for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati. Here. Councilmember Sander. Councilmember Sander. I'll come back to him. I can see that he's logged in. Uh, Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gatewood.
Here.
And Councilmember Sander, are you with us? I can see he's logged in, his just, he's muted. We have a quorum.
Excellent. All right, Stacy, can you go ahead and read the video recording and playback schedules?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM and Thursday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call on Conrad Mayer to lead the pledge allegiance.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask everyone to stay standing and call on Lieutenant Harry Kim of the Salvation Army for invocation.
All right, thank you. Let us pray. Father God, we truly thank you for this day. Thank you for this wonderful people of Rancho Cordova, working hard to serve the people of Rancho Cordova. And we pray that you will continue to provide the wisdom and knowledge so that they will lead and guide the people to the place they need to be and go and do the work that they need to be, they need to do, Lord God. We ask you to watch over us and guide us as this pandemic continues to spread, Lord. And we ask you to protect us from the pandemic and all the disease that is around us, Lord, and continue to help us so that we may continue to improve our lives and give hope to the hopeless and bring joy to those who have lost the joy throughout the year, Lord. Thank you for all you have done. Thank you for being with us once again. And we pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, I'm gonna call on Stacy Leiner to induce that first item.
Tonight, we have a number of presenters from the different water providers that serve the Rancho Cordova community to give us an update regarding water conservation. The topic for this presentation 5.1 is Water Conservation Update from Golden State Water, Sacramento County Water Agency, and Cal American Water. Joining us this evening via Zoom is Paul Schubert from Golden State Water, Evan Jacobs from Cal Am Water, and Mike Hewitt from Sacramento County Water Agency. And it's gonna take me just a moment. I'm gonna start bringing them all over. They are joining us via Zoom. And we'll get them up on the screen. Paul, we're pulling up the presentation. Are you gonna be the one to kick us off?
I am, yes, thank you.
Okay, give us just a moment. We're pulling up the presentation and we'll get it up on the screen. Paul, do you see it?
I do not see it on my screen yet.
Okay.
The good news is I now see it behind Mayor Gatewood.
I was just gonna say, I could go off from there.
It looks very educational.
There it is. I saw it for a second. There it is. Hey, Stacy, are we good to go?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us, your water purveyors, to present this information this evening. My name is Paul Schubert. I'm with the Golden State Water Company. And with me is Mike Hewitt with Sacramento County Water Agency and Evan Jacobs with the California American Water. Next slide, please. Quick agenda, we're just gonna give a drought update, talk about some conservation activities, and then each of your water purveyors will give specific information about what they're current, what they're doing. Next slide, please. The, one of the key messages, kind of follow along with my notes here too, that this is just not a California issue. This is a Western United States issue. And a lot of times, we think that it's just our location that is undergoing drought, but it's really not. The entire Western United States has experienced extreme or moderate drought or worse, with 60% in extreme drought or worse. And the East Coast has been hit with horrific flooding. You know, while we on the West Coast are actually the exact opposite of that. Next slide, please. You see here in California that all the Central Valley here, which we're right in the middle, and so you can't see my mouse as I'm trying to point, but in the Central Valley, we're right in the middle. We're experiencing exceptional drought. That's that dark purple area there. So 95% of the state is severe, extreme, or exceptional, and we're part of the exceptional drought. We actually had a pretty decent snowpack this last winter, around 60% of average. But then the abnormally hot spring hit, and the snow either evaporated or soaked into the mountain soil because we didn't have very much rain before the snow came. So the soil was very dry, and the snow melted. It either dorbbed in or began to evaporate. So the runoff, which would rely to fill our reservoirs, never occurred. Next slide, please. This graph is a little hard to see, probably a little small, but the Folsom Lake is one of the reservoirs that we rely on. Actually, the reservoir we rely on regionally for surface water. And you can see it's about 40% of its normal capacity at this time of year, only 24% of its overall capacity. Not sure if you've had an opportunity to see Folsom Lake recently, but you see more of the bottom than you do of water actually in there. Next slide, please. This is a really important graph, and to try to explain it, the light blue is what's normal, the normal curve for this, actually for the entire water year. The red line that goes across the bottom is the worst drought that we've ever experienced in recorded history. That's the 76, 77 drought. And you can see with that darker blue line, it was actually trending right along with that drought early spring. We got a little bit of reprieve over the summertime, and then it started declining again and matching the 76, 77 drought. Reclamation is doing, I'm sorry, the Bureau of Reclamation, who operates the Folsom Dam, is doing as much as they can to hold water behind the dam, while they're still trying to meet downstream needs for the environment and water supply contracts, et cetera. Next slide, please. Oh, stay on the slide for just a second. That last bullet, I'm sorry. NOAA is predicting a 70% chance of banania, which means a dry winter, and that would be horrible for us there in Northern California because, again, we rely on the snowpack for our water over the summer. And if we have another dry winter, I think it's gonna be in really rough shape for next year. Next slide. So, conservation. So Rancho Cordova residents did a great job in the 2015, actually 14, 15 drought on conserving water when they were asked to do so. And they, a lot of those water conservation activities have been maintained over the last five years. So we really need to work together, protect water state, not just state, but local water supplies also. And the biggest opportunity to save is reduce the amount of water use for outdoor watering. As we go into the fall and winter, this is an opportune time to significantly reduce your outdoor watering. Remember, next year could be worse, and we need to conserve as much as we can today. And this includes groundwater, too, in addition to surface water.
Hey, quick question. On the reduced outdoor watering, is that for residents or for commercial?
We're asking everybody.
I, I, but in the grand scheme of things, is that 90% commercial or is that 90% residents on this outdoor watering, especially for Rancho, to take an action item?
What do you say, 90%?
90% of the outdoor watering is caused by commercial? Or 90% of the outdoor watering is caused because of the residents doing that?
Um, actually, I don't really have that broken down by the 90%, and I'm sorry if I-
Or other split in general?
Um, it really depends on, yeah, there's probably about a 70, 30 split. Actually, in the summertime, you see about double the demands in the summer than we do in the wintertime. Actually, a little bit more than doubles. So using that, you assume that outdoor irrigation is about twice as much as what indoor irrigation is. Uh, but I don't have it split between commercial and residential as regards to outdoor irrigation. Obviously, residential don't, they don't have a separate meter that measures their outdoor irrigation. It's just a single meter. A lot of commercials, industrials, they do have a dedicated irrigation meter, so I can't get that information on, it'd probably, let's say, about half of my commercial accounts. But a lot of commercial accounts just have a single meter that they serve both their, you know, internal purposes and also external. So we extrapolate that just by knowing the demand increase over summer that we assume is irrigation. That's not always the case either. If I answered your question.
That helps a bit. Thank you.
Okay. Um, next slide, please. Well, this, this is the three, you know, I was gonna give messages in three, three takeaways here. For conservation, when you water, don't let water run off your property. Obviously, if it is, you're overwatering. Fix leaks promptly. Yeah, that's a big issue. Lots of water is lost to leaks. Leaks you may not even be aware of internally. And we're also asking customers to limit outdoor irrigation at three days per week. So add, this is true for all three water purveyors. We all have the same watering schedule, the same ask of our customers. So if your address ends in odd number of Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, if it ends in an even number, please water on Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays. Now, keep in mind, we're also asking for a 15% reduction, voluntary conservation over what you used in 2020. And there's, again, the best way to do this is reduce your outdoor watering because that's where the majority of water is used. I wouldn't say 90%, but it's, again, it's probably 70, 50 to 70% more is outside, inside. Also, one thing we always try to remind people, keep your trees alive. I mean, droughts come and go. We know with climate change, temperatures getting hotter, you know, the droughts may be getting more frequent. But you can still keep your trees alive because it takes forever for those to grow back. It's a great community asset. You know, lawns, you could, you know, let stress a little bit. Or, you know, eliminate your laws if you choose to do so. But your trees, again, if you turn up your irrigation system, please make sure you either handwater your trees or install a new irrigation station to keep your trees wet with drip. Um, if you need help with any of that, we could talk, actually, I think I have some slides on that later. Um, next slide, please. And here I turn it over to Evan.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Evan Jacobs with California American Water. Just to give you a little bit of specifics about each of our different water systems, we all have different characteristics. California American Water has two water systems in Rancho Cordova. Over 90% of the water that we produce and supply to customers in Rancho Cordova is supplied from local groundwater wells. This means that we are less subject to weather pattern variations and to the draining of Folsom Lake. However, the groundwater resource itself is also interconnected to a lot of our other systems and to our other supplies. It's important that we continue to use it wisely. And we're making that same call for 15% reduction in water use. So folks know, we are currently at stage one of our conservation rules. That is a voluntary stage. We do not have enforcement powers in it, but we have all of the same rules. And really, I think whether you're commercial or residential, we want folks to keep water on their property. Don't let it run off and waste it. Fix those leaks promptly, particularly in irrigation systems, and reduce watering to three days per week through the end of the hot season, and then try to limit it after that. I think doing those things, we can protect the resource very effectively through this winter.
Yep, one more slide, Evan.
Oh, one more, thank you. Uh, we are communicating with our customers in a variety of different ways. We're using build text messages, emails, and social media. To Paul's point, I think we've gotten more sophisticated in understanding about what we need to use outdoor water on during a drought. And we just hosted a webinar for about 300 customers in the Sacramento area on tree care during a drought because it is really important we protect those trees and continue to give them enough water to live, even if we're reducing outdoor water use on lawns and other things like that. Customers of our company are folks that have questions. We do have a number of conservation programs and services. Or if you want to report some suspected water waste to us, visit our website, californiaamwater.com, or you can contact our conservation team in Sacramento at the phone number below, which is 916-568-4201. Thanks. Thank you. And, uh, next slide. This will be Mike.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you. This is Mike Hewitt from Sacramento County Water Agency, one of the other water purveyors in the Rancho Cordova service area. And we, like Evan mentioned earlier, you know, they're primarily groundwater in Rancho Cordova area. SAC County Water Agency is really both groundwater and surface water. And the ratio of groundwater versus surface water varies throughout the year. And it also varies depending on how much, you know, rain we get on a year-to-year basis and the health of our reservoirs and waterways. As was mentioned earlier by Paul, it's a really tough, um, water season this year. It's been very dry. And we are also very concerned going into next year of being, uh, if it's dry again, it's gonna be even worse. So that's definitely everyone in the region is paying attention to. But as far as this year, we are reaching out to our customers. We've sent out a number of mailers. I say a number, we've sent out two mailers to this point, giving some tips on ways to be more water efficient. And we are planning on sending out another one in the next 30 days or so. We also have some news media slots to get out to the public. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about some tips, tricks, and resources for, for customers. We have rebate programs and water efficiency tips. And those could be accessed via our website at www.sacwa.net. And our rebates are designed to help convert lawns to drought-tolerant landscapes and to install efficient clothes washers and toilets to reduce water use. Our website also has our current watering schedule as well. We also, next slide, please. We also have what's called free water-wise house calls. This is to help assess the irrigation system and check for folks' indoor plumbing, such as toilets, faucets, dishwashers, washing machines, and showerheads. And all you need to do is to get a free assessment is to call 866-685-2322, as listed on the slide. And then we also, you know, if anybody witnesses water waste or just has general water efficiency questions, they can call our general number at 311, and that will forward to our water conservation staff and operations group to get the help you need. And with that, I will turn it back over to Paul.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Uh, next slide, please. So the Golden State Water Company's Cordova system is supplied with about 35% of surface water, which comes off the American River, which comes from Folsom Lake. And we use that for our summer peak period. We turn our surface water plant on in about mid-May, and it's still currently running, but we usually turn it off about mid-October. So that 35% is really compressed into, you know, the peak summer months to go to prior question of how much is outside irrigation. But it is critical, um, supply. It was curtailed in August, which was the first time in, actually, by state history, that our water rights, which date from 1851, were curtailed. So it was quite surprising. And, but we got it back again in September. They were not curtailed September, so we turned our surface water plant back on. If we get a really dry winter, there's potential that surface water be curtailed again in 2020, wow, 2022, 2022, which could make things very challenging to meet demands. So with that, we filed our, what's called a Schedule 14.1, which Evan had mentioned. We're also in stage one at this time. But, you know, I do wanna let people know if we have a dry winter and our water, surface water potentially gets curtailed, that we may need to go into a higher stage as early as next spring. But hopefully, that's not the case. Let's all do a rain dance, and hopefully this goes away. But that's a possibility. Next slide, please. So, um, customer communication. And we've sent all of our customers of notices, both on Schedule 14.1. We have mailers on the drought, the call for 15% conservation. We constantly have our bill messaging, bill stuffers about rebates and conservation programs. You know, like Mike, and I believe Evan also too, Evan, you could nod you had the water-wise, water, um, free audits. So just call one of your water purveyors, and you get a free water audit, and it lets you know where you could improve efficiency. We also have rebate programs and a bunch of other conservation tools that are available to all of our customers for their use to use the water efficiently. We have multiple ways to contact us. We have our website, gswater.com/conservation. You can email us, conservation@gswater.com. Something called Facebook and Twitter, you could use those things too. I'm not sure that those work, but, or the phone, which is one of my favorites. You can call us 24/7 there. Uh, next slide, please. And that is the end of the presentation. So, um, thank you so much for your time. And I know at really high level on a lot of these things, I could have given a whole, you know, four-hour presentation on this and forty years, but hopefully answer some of the questions that are being raised. And if Mike and Evan, we, we have any questions, we're here to answer them.
All right, thank you.
I have a brief question.
Go ahead, Linda.
Jared, I have a brief question.
Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah. I, I remember so well in '75 and '76, there was only 250 CFS coming out of Folsom and Nimbus. Does anybody know what it is today?
Um, I checked it on Friday. I was actually talking to Sean from Soilborne Farms on Friday, and at that time, it was about 600 CFS. I heard they're supposed to go down to 550, but it doesn't look like that's what it's currently down to as of Friday.
Interesting. And of course, it, nowadays, you know, there are a lot more regulations about fish and whatnot, so. But it was, it was pretty barren at that point. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions for us?
All right.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Great presentation on our water and retention and how we're trying to deal with this drought. Hopefully, we have water starting the next year. Now, I would like to call on Conrad Mayer to come and give a presentation on Cordova Lancers, Leaders, Leaders Update on Mentor at Cordova High School, and of course, our MACH program.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Sir, Stacy, all of you in the background there zooming. Could I bring my family up?
Of course.
Family, please come and be closer. We all have our masks. We've all had our shots. Well, I just wanna say thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to give an update on the Cordova Lancer Leaders and Legends and our, uh, our youth organization called MACH. We are the adults, mentors, alumni, and friends that are listening to today's future leaders. As we move forward, we have continued to mentor those that have felt worthless and like no one cared. They are saying things like, school didn't, they didn't feel supported at school. They wanted to do better. And we, CL3, were there to hear them and help them through MACH. We, CL3 mentors, many of that have grown up in Rancho Cordova and that attended Cordova High School, were committed to not letting them slip through the cracks. As we remember those times as students, when we were, when we had many caring people that made up our village, as mentioned a few nights ago at our Rancho Cordova Athletics Association Hall of Fame ceremonies.
So I get a report on our students, and I'm, I'm the emotional one of the group. So when he talks about that, like, I can, like, each one of them holds a special place in my heart. So last year, MACH faced many challenges, but as a MACH family, we worked, worked, and worked through them. We were grinding in the Zoom room. These Wednesday weekly meetings provided MACH students with their only non-classroom connection to school during our COVID year. The Zoom room, just like our in-person meetings, provided a safe place to share challenges, celebrate successes, and be informed. Last year, these meetings provided job career training through VSP with Shawna Harrington. Completion of FASF forms were also a very important topic as our MACH crew from last year had 20-plus graduating seniors. In early October, we were brought in the Jackson Brothers, and forgive me, Conrad gave me their names today, but-
Very intelligent.
Went over my head. Were brought in to support our seniors in navigating their way through their FASF forms. Meetings were not the only accomplishments of MACH members last year. Performing service in a safe way throughout our community also happened. Helping during 4th of July, sorting and giving out food with the Cordova Food Locker. Helping with the drive-through Kids Day in the Park. Helping the city with e-waste, as well as distributing flyers to community and emergency situations. Meetings and service kept us and grew us into a stronger MACH family. Last year, we had 87 members on the books, with about half of them attending weekly meetings and participating in service. About half of those participating service MACH members have gone off to Folsom Lake College. So thank you Rancho Cordova Palmer's Program, William Jessup University, CSU Sacramento, American River College, SAC City, and a tech school with the help of Sounder Solution, which also was a presenter last year for us. And a handful are in- And a handful are employed now by VSP. So thank you so much, Ms. Harrington from VSP and Stacy Delaney, who was leading that charge as well. So at the end of our meetings, we give C notes. A C note is to share success, celebrate or thank. Tonight's MOC C note goes to the City of Rancho Cordova for supporting and believing in the youth of Rancho Cordova and knowing we can all do better. And we'd like to present you with a um yearbook of MOC as the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. So it does have pictures from all American City's kids.
Good evening. My name is Veronica DeAlba and I want to share the growth of our program in relation to our mentors and partnerships. We currently have an increase in teachers, counselors, coaches, retired teach and retired teachers. We have also increased the number of partners through the city's collaborations such as VSP, Folsom Lake, College, Sounder Solutions and the Cordova uh Food Locker. We also have people of all trades, but most importantly, our community. I was away for a few years from the program. But since I have returned to the MOC program, I have taken a new role as a civic engagement specialist with the Cordova Community Council. I have also been voted by parents of Cordova High School to be on the Cordova High Site Council. We have created a wonderful partnership with MOC. I attend weekly meetings and provide numerous volunteer opportunities for our MOC students. As a mentor at Cordova High, we continue to grow and have a deep impact on our students and our community. Mentorship has provided us the opportunity to become family. I am now mentoring kids at the same school where I felt no love as a student. During my time at Cordova High School, I helped many students graduate, join the military, go to CSUs, UCs and find work. I remember one of many students who came crying into my office because she felt like there was no hope. She was going through a very dark time, but thanks to the opportunity she gave me, we got through it. I want to also mention two very special MOC mentors that are part of our program. Constance Goins, a clinical social worker and chemical dependency counselor, alumni class of seventy-eight, who is one of our community mothers. She has housed and raised many young ones. And finally, Kathy Hiramato, a former special education specialist, the daughter of a Cordova Community Council Board Member and a lifelong volunteer. And with this, I'll uh pass it over to Conrad.
In conclusion, we struggle, but we keep grinding. Uh, as we got close to graduation last year, we had two of our young ladies lose their mothers. Imagine the stress, your senior year, couple of months away from graduation and having this happen. They recovered. We also had a recent loss and we've had a um a couple of challenges these, the start of a few years. And so I'd just like to say uh rest in peace to Calvin Augusta and Tim LaPole. Our family will always miss them. So it is nice, so it is nice to reflect on our time as Team Rancho Cordova at our All-American Cities Competition. A moment we will never lose. To add some excitement, I would like to ask uh one of our finds in this travels, um, Ms. Jane Lee to come up. She'd like to give a testimony on why she's involved in our program. And if time will allow us, I think there's some energetic graduates that would like to share a minute or two on where they're at and where they're going and how much they appreciate the city for all that they have done as well. So uh just give us the, the hook if we gotta go.
Good evening, I'm Jane Lee. I wanted to talk just to let you put a face to the name. I'm in the report. I'm a volunteer math tutor. I specialize in static loads and weapon systems on the stealth bomber. And I've been private tutoring in Sacramento and Eldorado Counties for twenty-five years from kids from kindergarten to pre-calculus. What drew me to MOC is your support. Of the many opportunities for me to help kids, the fact that the city puts money into this program means you want concrete change. And so standing in the, in the breach, so to speak, between the students, what's going on educationally anyway in this country, and then with COVID, the gap is widening. So to have this opportunity to say to you, to those pieces that make such a difference to these kids that other places in Sacramento are getting, and I just want to say gently to consider doing it for all of the kids at Cordova High. Planners, second graders in Folsom School District have planners. These kids do not, not as a regular basis. And that's an instrumental piece in them going to college is to understanding how to manage their time and, and projects. I worked with a student from MOC that I could gently say could be the next Dr. Ben Carson, but he has never been spoken to about college and it's a very difficult, I'm working with him, but navigating all of it. And MOC has been instrumental. He couldn't be where he is right now, but I wanted you to know about the talent pool that you have there and being in corporate world and then being in education, seeing what these kids have to offer the community is huge. And then also the last piece is to consider a math resource teacher. The private schools in this area, Jesuit High School, Christian Brothers and others have a math resource teacher on staff. So when you've got a problem, they go right to a tutor. Because I can only be so many places tutors can and to go into someone's home, but you catch it when it happens, not the two days, three day turnaround to wait to see a tutor. So I just want to put this idea to you, out to you, because success leaves clues. And what other people are doing, it's why Wendy's just finds out where McDonald's is and goes down the street. They don't spend a dollar. They just know when McDonald's spend it, so they go there. You look at what Jesuit does, Christian Brothers, you do the same thing. And they do it. And I've interacted with those teachers. They're on it with the teachers, with the kids, and they tutor them that day when they need it. So I just want to put that out to you. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Okay, this is where it could get a little crazy. These are a couple of our outstanding seniors.
Um, I'm Corey Harrison.
Um, I'm Eva Gra.
Um, and then through MOC, um, we both got employed to VSP. Um, it was a great opportunity and we currently work there now. And uh just meeting the staff there and everyone there is very welcoming and helpful. Uh, it's just a great job to have with the help of our, our MOC family and we deeply appreciate it and.
Yeah, even though they're a company, they're an insurance company and um, you know, we kind of made our way around and met people and we realized, oh, we're the only eighteen-year-olds really that work there. But um regardless, they still treat us with the same respect and it's really nice to go into a work environment that you feel respected at, um, especially just after working food service, you know, customer service. Um, they're very respectful, respectful and they work with us regardless of our um college schedule, basketball schedule, they're really helpful. Um, they do keep us accountable, you know, they ask for quality work in return, but I just think that that turnover has been a really great opportunity and I hope it keeps staying in MOC because um it's really set both of us up, you know, for a good even career path for the future. So, yeah.
A lot of our kids, as they said, um, probably wouldn't have made it through their senior year without Ms. Jane. So I want to give a personal thanks to her. Uh, she sat in my room numerous times uh with these kids, one-on-one. And I saw the wrinkles, the stress roll off their faces. I saw grades go up tremendously. When you talked about your grades, they were happy to talk about theirs. So um I, I thank you, Ms. Jane. And um as an example of what uh good mentors can do and basically just what we used to do back in the day is, you know, that use that foot. Uh, I have Erwin, uh, Mr. Erwin, is it Hernandez? Yes. They all have three last names and I get them all wrong. Um, but when he came to us, well, you tell it.
You tell it, Erwin. Tell them how you found us.
Uh, well, uh, Ms. Wallace is my math teacher in freshman year. Uh, I'm Erwin, uh, by the way. Um, and well, I was, uh, I was always late to class. Um, and um I didn't have um much confidence in myself. Um, and Ms. Wallace saw something in myself that I didn't see. Um, and she brought me to uh MOC. Um, and it really gave me um just different perspective in life. It gave me um more confidence. Um, it, it, um, it, it really just changed my view um in life and what, what do I need to do to be successful? Um, and um, you know, I'm internally in debt with Conrad, with, with, with the family of MOC uh because um uh it, it just gave me so many opportunities um through community service, through going to Denver uh to represent Rancho Cordova. Um, and it just, uh, it was uh great. Um, and uh currently I'm going to uh Sac State. Uh, my major is in sociology and uh I'm working on part-time too uh on the side. Um, and then just the other day Conrad um helped me get a car. So my first car, um, and he was there to check it out for me. Um, but yeah, it's just, uh, it's more, it's more than just, uh, just a school program. Like it's outside of school. It's whenever you, um, you need them, they're there. Uh, you can text them, call them, hey, um, you know, I'm struggling. Hey, I'm looking for a car, you know, can you help me out? Uh, you know, they, they have so much experience and they can help you in so many different ways. And you know, um, it was, it was just great. Thank you, thank you so much.
I helped, I helped Erwin with the car because he didn't complain about my snoring when we were roommates in Denver. Is there anybody else that was like, oh, Ms., our, one of our youngest mentees, Ms. Valaria Cruz, Valaria Cruz? Looks like we need to go to a television break.
Okay, hello, my name is Valeria Yular. I'm a freshman at Cordova High School and I have been an unofficial member of MOC for many years. The past few years have been very difficult. I moved to Washington in sixth grade and lost my friends and my community. As I returned three years later and had my life flipped upside down once again to the life, due to life struggles, I felt hopeless and would not smile and did not want to do much. I didn't want to go to school and I spent most of my time in my room. My mom did make me go to summer school, but that was it. Since I officially joined MOC at the end of the summer, I have volunteered over thirty hours of Cordova Community, with the Cordova Community Council. I'm finding happiness again in school and, and have been playing sports. The MOC program has proved me, has provided me with many opportunities to move on and dream big. But most important, I am now part of a big family with similar struggles. Ugh, similar, I can't say that. Thank you.
Well, I think that's it unless anybody, Mr. Kanye, no?
Uh, hi, my name is Kanye Benson. Uh, I'm a part of the MOC family. Uh, so my sophomore year, uh, I kind of like messed up in a couple of places. I had moved out of, uh, out of Rancho Cordova actually into the northern area. So I did not get approved for an interdicial, interdistrical transfer. So I did uh go to Kenny, uh graduated a year early thanks to MOC and the MOC family uh helping me out so much, uh doing all these volunteer hours. Um, rather than be, I need help with schoolwork or in my personal life, they always were there for me. Um, so right now I'm currently um with the program, Sounder Solutions. Um, so with them, I'm currently in a IT trade school called MedCert. Um, I will be done with that and by the end of this week on Friday. And um I get all of my IT certificates, my A plus and all that kind of stuff. And I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for Conrad, MOC or any of this stuff. So I want to give a big thanks to that and helping out in the community. Anytime Conrad calls me up, hey, I need help with this. If I can make it, I'm always there, you know? So I want to thank him so much and the MOC family, Ms. Wallace and everyone else. So, yeah.
Okay, with that, I'd like to say, first of all, thanks to all the mentors, because each time they, they say my name, they're actually saying everyone's. I'm like the world's biggest procrastinator. And all these mentors back here behind me are my support team. So I couldn't be where, where I'm at. We couldn't be what, what we're doing without these mentors you see in the audience. And many aren't even here tonight. Uh, so with that, I'm just gonna say thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Rancho Cordova has done a lot for me and my family. And hopefully when they get my age, which will be a long time from now, uh, they'll feel the same way and they'll be giving, giving back in a similar way. Yes, so thank you City of Rancho Cordova for having faith, trust and liking the product that you see before you tonight.
All right, we're not done yet. We have City of Rancho recognition for individuals. So I'm gonna butcher your name and then you're gonna have to guess if this is your name. So at first. Huh?
Are you a substitute?
I am. Hey, hey now. Hey, let me go with uh Kanye Benson. Hey, got that name. Congratulations. Maybe you're getting that degree in IT?
Yeah, uh, actually this Friday is my last course. And uh I have to go take my final exam two weeks after that or before, so.
All right, well, hit me up after you get done.
Okay.
Hire somebody new. You know what I'm saying? Looking for employees. Uh, woo, that's a name right there. Okay, here we go. Erwin Hernandez Miranda. Miranda? So close, nailed it on that one. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for overcoming. Okay, Gabriella Monique Oka. Okay, well, I'm gonna hand it to Conrad. Okay, this is easy. Eva Graff. So close, so close. Congratulations, congratulations on the job, VSP. All right, and Michaela Cornish. Oh, she's not here, she's gonna get applause in there. All right, from me to the city, this is one of our favorite programs. I'm so glad to see you guys were able to get through it and all the great things that are due because of it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that when I talk about the MOC program to colleagues in other cities, uh, this is one of those things, kind of like the Cordova County Council, that causes enormous interest in our peers in other cities and a lot of frankly jealousy that we have this. And, you know, we also have the benefit in Rancho Cordova of having a measure age process that allows us to fund a lot of community endeavors like this. And it is always really easy to seek support and get support for MOC because the results are so obvious. because the results are so obvious. Uh, you're a homegrown program. You've got the heart of a ton of volunteers involved. You're, uh, enhancing the lives of our local kids and we can see it. We can measure it and you have. And that sets you apart from a lot of other national programs that would probably like to come in here and cash a check, but don't have your heart, uh, nor the true involvement or change in the kids that we're seeking. So as far as I'm concerned, and I think of many of us share this opinion, MOC is the best youth program we have in Rancho Cordova. And we are very proud of all of you for your participation and your leadership in it. And we look forward to even greater things from MOC in the future. A bigger MOC at Cordova High School and many MOCs at, uh, our middle schools where they are also desperately needed. So, uh, congratulations on everything you guys have achieved, but I am looking for a lot more and I think the potential is almost unlimited. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, Garrett, if I could just come in and echo everything that you just said. Um, and also just really, really excited about the opportunity to have a, a new youth center just off of Folsom Boulevard. And I know Boys and Girls Club is going to be involved with as well, but I know there's going to be a need for, for MOC to be there. And it's also, you know, you're going to have your own space. So when we talk about, you know, at Cordova High or at our middle schools or at our elementary schools, um, but having that year-round space for, for you all to, to, to work at, I think is going to be really, really exciting. Um, and I think most, most people know we also bought the, the lots across the street. So, um, you know, many more exciting things to come too.
So Garrett.
Yes, Linda.
Okay, um, um, you're, everything everybody has said is absolutely correct. Uh, Conrad has just done a wonderful job and it's so important, um, that he's doing that. But, you know, in addition to, um, to our community, it has been fun. We really need to also recognize these companies like VSP who have, have been here for, you know, almost forty years now. And there are, um, graduates of Cordova High back in the nineties who walked out of Cordova High and got the same kind of internship job that, uh, that the ladies were talking about. And it, you know, they're, they're really part of the success of the participation of the business community and like you, offering Kanye a job, you know, uh, regardless. But, um, um, it really, it does, um, the people who often say it takes a village are absolutely correct because there's a, a lot of partners here. And, and I know that Conrad could probably list off twelve or ten on both hands, um, that we should probably recognize, so.
I agree. Everyone that's willing to donate their time and help out our MOC program is a benefit to our city. And Conrad, your program is amazing, without question. It's something that should be replicated and it's a bragging point for us in the city. Even if we didn't create it, I get to claim it. All right. Good job, guys. All right. If I can call Joe Cuffy. Nope, there's an E in his name. Our, there he is. And introduce our newest employee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce our newest addition in the Building and Safety Division. This is Cynthia Ling. Cynthia is our newest building permit technician and will be assisting us with permit issuing and plan tracking and other duties as necessary. Cynthia started with us on August thirtieth. She was born and raised here in Elk Grove. Uh, but she's coming to us from Peoria, Illinois, where she was a development technician. But currently she does live in Elk Grove. She's not commuting, so. Um, I'm going to let Cynthia tell you a little bit about herself.
Hi, I'm Cynthia. Nice to meet you. Uh, but yeah, you pretty much said it. I'm coming to you from Peoria, Illinois, originally born and raised in Elk Grove. Um, I went to school in Southern California, Cal State Fullerton, um, worked part-time working at Disney. And, um, yeah, now I'm here. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not, and the agenda may do so at this time by teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make public comment by teleconference, please raise the hand feature at the bottom center of the screen. If you're participating by phone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine and raise your hand. For participating by Zoom or by telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For any items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon by the mayor at that point in the agenda item when they are to be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their minutes to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under provision of the California Government Code, the city council prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless demonstrated to be an emergency nature or need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Stacey, is there anyone that would like to have public comment?
Yes, the city clerk's office did receive one general public comment via email. Um, that came from Scott Fowles. And that, uh, public comment was distributed via email to the city council and is available in the back of the room and will be available on our website as well. In addition to that, we have, um, some speaker cards that have been given to me. Our first speaker this evening will be Helen Jack Zola. Following Helen will be Helen Wayland Basha. And following, uh, the two Helens will be Beverly and Rose. And then I will go to Zoom and the telephone. So Helen Jack Zola. You'll have three minutes.
Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor.
Councilmembers and thank you, Stacy. I'm an owner of a mobile home in Colonial Estates and I've owned it since ninety-eight. Thanks to stimulus, I decided to repair an existing deck. I am now told that such a repair, if it is over two square feet, requires a permit to construct for a hundred and ninety-six dollars. I have two neighbors who also did such a repair and they were not required to obtain a permit. I'm a senior on a fixed income. Do I have any recourse? Um, I appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
So you want to spend money to repair your own deck?
Yeah.
Yes, you do have recourse. Cyrus?
Yes, Helen, you can, uh, speak with Michael Runner. He is in the back of the room and he can talk to you about, uh, possible options for you, to help you out.
Thank you.
Love when you want to repair stuff in the city. It's always.
That's what I thought.
It's, it's one of our best things is when you want to take care of the problem, we want to help you get there.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Your mobile home is in a park, correct?
Yes, yes.
So is it, Cyrus, is that a fee for us or is that an HCD fee?
Yeah, I think those are the details we need to find out to see exactly what it is. And, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure that fee would even owe to us. So, but yeah, check with Mike. He can help you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, I am Helen Wayland Basha. I live off of, uh, Tierra Grande Circle. I'm going to talk about an issue that's near and dear to my heart and that's the levee that runs on Rod Bodre. It goes along the gated community and it stops at the ticket booth. On numerous occasions, I have brought up to the city, um, whether it be in meetings I've had with different members, whether it's been in emails, whether it's been in emails that I've also included the owner of the horse that rides up the levee. Well, on Sep- Tuesday, September fourteenth, Army Corps of Engineer was out inspecting that levee. At that time, they saw our horseback rider ride up the levee. Um, he confronted her. She said no one's ever spoken to her. Later I talked to the person, I called them over because I happened to be in the, in the Pappas' yard when I saw somebody in front of my house. And I talked with them and he said to me, was, has anybody made anybody aware of this incident? This is what's going on. And I said, yes, I've talked to the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm trying to be proactive. I'm trying to protect the levee that protects houses in front of me if for any reason the water exceeds the height. And I feel Rancho could care less about it. The same, uh, person, um, I told on numerous occasions, you cannot ride up that as part of the levee. You're affecting the understructure of the roads. Uh, she's ignored me. She laughs at me. Um, and if you go back through the records, she has no access to that portion of where the horse trail is. There is no horse trail over twenty-five forty-two Rod Bodre. There is a hiking easement that blocks off any access to that. Um, again, she's riding down the, uh, hiking trail. The last time I saw her was on September seventeenth at twelve fifteen PM. She knows the Pappas' are no longer at that house and she continues to ride down it. I want to know what's going to be done because her horse has pooped on areas that is not public road. It is private property. She's not cleaning it up. And I've come to you and requested catch sacks over a year ago and I want to know what action the city has taken to enforce catch sacks and to for, enforce this horseback rider to observe the California driving codes when she leaves her property on, uh, Sterling Park Drive. Thank you.
Next speaker is Beverly Fletcher. Following Beverly will be Rose Gilstrap. Beverly, you'll also have up to three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me. Um, I'm coming to speak on behalf of the, um, Bread of Life Food Bank. Um, they've been in, uh, assisting the community for almost two years. And, um, they started off as a walk-through through their building where you could just pick things that you wanted. But they have expanded now that, so that it is a drive-through. And now they are considered a disaster relief. And they serve approximately seven thousand families per month. It is a very much-needed, uh, help for the entire community. And, um, a situation has come up. Uh, they were needing sponsors to pay for the rent of the building and have not been able to do so. So they basically have two months left and this is going to be a big impact on the, um, the city. Uh, I have sent, uh, the director information about some of the grants and things, but those monies are not available until next year. And so it is an urgent situation that we need sponsors, donations, or another location that the city could maybe be provide so that we can continue helping the people. Rose and I are both volunteers. We're not, uh, directors or anything.
We, we started out very small and quickly became large because of COVID. We're actually part of a core twenty-five. And, um, we're considered like the biggest, um, not bank, we're a pantry. But, um, it's, we're considered disaster relief. And Sacramento County Food Bank, they govern us. They can't give us any funds, but they govern us. We get all of our food from the. This is really dear to my heart because I don't want to see people hungry. But Rancho Cordova is going to lose a really, really big thing if we can't get some kind of help. And we need it here. There's a lot homeless people. We feed every zip code. We don't require ID. We've had people come this far from Tracy because they, they know the quality of food that we're giving out here in Rancho. We feed, um, homeless people. We, we reach out to everybody that we can reach out to. And we really need some help because we're, we're going to lose it. Rancho Cordova is going to lose a really great thing if we can't get some help. She's got the facts. I've got the criteria. So that's.
In essence, right now, um, the funds that they need in, to pay in back rent is basically forty thousand dollars. Um, so either, if you can recommend sponsors that can help us immediately or provide emergency funding or help us with another location, it would be a blessing.
Where are you guys at of right now?
Right now, we're at the Way of Life Food Pantry, the Way of Life Church. I don't know the, I didn't bring the address. I'm sorry. This was.
It's one oh four one five Folsom Boulevard.
It's in the, um, Mountain Mike's parking lot. We do the alleyway behind it and it's a drive-through. We get, um, from the Sacramento County Food Ba- Bank, we, we get to, um, they bring over their trucks and they drop food off, um, twice a week. We get donations from our, you know, certain stores here. Her and I pick up at Walmart on Folsom Mondays and Fridays. Then we get their donations to that food pantry.
We get from Bel Air.
We get Bel Air. Yeah, I mean, we can lose all of that because everybody wants them, you know?
Mayor, if I may, um, Cyrus, I know the, the Way of Life has reached out to the city and we have talked to them, uh, on this, um, property earlier. I think earlier this month.
Yes, I believe, uh, some, uh, staff members have been in discussions. Uh, one of, uh, the strategies that we were hoping to, uh, pursue was the possibility of, uh, Way of Life partnering with the Rancho Cordova Food Bank and maybe the food locker and maybe finding a way that they could partner on some of the, uh, the activities they have. Because we do have a food locker that's active. And, uh, so we would continue the discussion to see if there's any way that the partnership could be developed between the two entities.
They are already receiving, they are already partnered with the food bank.
Right.
And we serve.
We're governed by the Sacramento County Food Bank. We are. And I've been to the food locker because my family has been in needs plenty of times. They don't give you even anything to put together a full meal. This place over here, they give you, we get meat. We get dairy. We get everything, fresh vegetables, fresh fruit. Um, it's an abundance. And I've been to the other places and they, it's just not, it's almost, almost like, wow, we're not worth this. We don't even get enough to make one meal for the family. You get two bags. It doesn't matter how many people are in your family. This place here is disaster relief. We're giving out food that they can feed their families with.
If I may, I would also like to refer you to Michael Runner, who's in the back of the room and he can have some conversation with you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I volunteered at this location many times and it is true, there is an abundance of food that they do give to, uh, people. And a lot of people come from many places, um, to this venue.
As we, uh, continue through public comment, uh, we finished the speaker cards that are, um, the ones that I have from speakers in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to raise their hand and, and make a public comment? Uh, you'll have just a quick moment to raise that hand. No, so I don't see any hands raised, uh, Mr. Mayor in, uh, Zoom or by telephone.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and go on to council reports and I'm going to start with Siri.
Yay. Okay. Um, so I'll start off with, um, I attended the Folsom Lake College Council meeting and I got an update on their twenty-one, twenty-two program. They also talked about the, their budget. One good news that I saw out of it that they did mention is that they do have funding to support the refugee students that are coming in, um, this year. Um, they also have allocated ten percent of their budget to fund for diverse candidates to support diversity. Um, they talked about their capital project, um, the Rancho Cordova Center, which is on track to being done pretty soon. The Zach Dowell, um, also showed, um, the Innovation Center marker space. Uh, their tagline is basically, you know, where anyone can come and make anything. And they showed in this space, so students anywhere from arts to science or they can go create something and they help them. go create something, and they helped them with short internships. And they actually have a pipeline where, you know, they can go all the way from, they go introduce this facet of the middle school. In the case of Rancho Cordova, it's the Mills Middle School, and then go on to the Cordova High School, on to Folsom Lake, where they can actually transfer that learning on to, from, it's a funnel path, and they can transfer it either to a career or to further education. Then I attended the unveiling of the Peace Officer Memorial, which is dedicated to the memory of Officer Mark and to all the law enforcement officers who make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. This was a really, really hard event to attend, and I hope never to attend such an event. It's the hardest thing for, to see a mother speak at a memorial dedicated to her son. So truly, thank you for the sacrifice, Officer Mark, and all the officers that do your duty. Really appreciate that very much. I also attended the Rancho Cordova Luncheon with the Folsom Cordova Superintendent Sarah Coligan. She gave an update on how school life is now, you know, after these students being at home a year back from COVID, and how the school district is taking every precaution to safeguard students and staff against COVID. She also talked about how the school is taking security, this is a question I asked too. She talked about how the school is taking security measures. There's a TikTok challenge that's going on right now, which is really popular among kids, and they're trying to steal school property, and they're posting this challenge on TikTok. Now, this is getting to be quite serious, and so they're taking strict measures to safeguard against that. She highlighted the fact that there are many part-time jobs open in the school district. Include school, their openings include like food service workers, student care assistant, health assistant, yard duty supervisor. At this time, there are so many positions open, there's so many gaps, that the teacher and principals have been doing double duty, you know, and they're overwhelmed. So if there's anybody that you know or are interested that can help out with these part-time jobs and can make a difference to our school districts, that would be great. In fact, I've seen the Elkhorn School District, and this is in the paper, they're giving, I think, $30 more per day for these kind of positions. So there's a huge gap, and it would be great if people can step up and see if they can help out with these positions. And last but not least, on Saturday, I attended Apapa's 20th Year Celebrations. This is the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Program. This is a nonprofit organization that was actually founded by two people, Cici Yin and Regina Yin, and their mission is to advance Apapi communities, to increase leadership and civic engagement. Now, they started with just one chapter, two people, and now it has 35 chapters across the country, and it was a wonderful event to attend. And that is my update, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Siri. We'll go ahead and go to David Sander.
Yes, my pleasure. A lot to report, so I'll try to be some little brief and concise. I attended the board meeting of the USA Track and Field Pacific Organization on Sunday, virtually, and we got an awful lot of praise from that organization for persevering in some challenging circumstances this summer in putting on the track meets that we facilitated at Cordova High School. They were frankly shocked by our community-level support for them and also shocked at the level of facility that we had to offer. So they are looking at, as was suggested last year, years and years of track meets at Cordova High as a result. There is one additional feature we should probably consider. It is a, I don't know if you guys remember in the Olympics, but there's an event called the Steeple Chase, where you jump over a hurdle that looks like a balance bar, and you end up with your feet wet in a pit of water, and then you can continue racing. These are like 5K or I think even 15K runs. But that's the only event now that we lack as a facility for USATF and adult masters competitions. So, but even without that, we have really put ourselves up on the board as a great place to do track and field and cross-country activities. So I'm just passing on there. Thanks and congratulations to you. The Rancho of a Sports Hall of Fame event last Saturday night was awesome. This was the sixth one that we've done since we founded RCAA. You get hundreds of people there celebrating the sports history that is just unbelievable in this community. Every time I go, I am just left dumbfounded by the amazing accomplishments of our teams from the past and our residents. I mean, I did not know until I read the workup for this year's class that the 1973 Cordova Cross Country Team was ranked third in the nation. Third in the nation, a cross-country team at Cordova High. Now, I knew they had a long history of incredible success there, but third in the nation is sort of off the charts. So I don't, I don't even know how many teams in California can make that claim to have once been ranked that high. But it, the night is just filled with stories like that. So it's, it's really an amazing thing, builds community, and it brings support back for our current use programs, which is just great. I've attended Seco Board Meeting, Regional Sand Board Meeting, National League of Cities Activities, as their Transportation Policy Chair, Community Council Board, the community luncheon that Siri mentioned last week was great, the police memorial was quite moving. And as she said very well, I don't want to attend any more of these. But that was, I think we did a really nice job there, and I think everyone who was involved in that memorial or touched by it is thankful that we undertook the steps we did. So thank you to staff for your good work there, and of course, thank you to our officers for what you do every day and protecting us. We had a Dan Skogland dedication before our last meeting. I'm not sure we mentioned that, perhaps we did, of our atrium. And there's a little more to come out there with regard to lettering or naming, but so honored to have been able to speak there on behalf of, on behalf of Dan, our former councilman who died, died in office. It's wonderful to name that after him. We have, oh, and Donald, I attended the butterfly release, but unfortunately, I was late enough that I missed the release. And apparently, even if you buy a box of butterflies, they don't hold it for you, they just release them all at once. I didn't realize that. I thought I'd show up, get my two boxes of the butterflies, and be able to release them. So I was happy to contribute, but next time we do this, I look forward to releasing my own butterflies. However, however, that can be arranged. And finally, the thing I'll mention is, we have this ongoing discussion with Folsom. It's a collaboration between RC SAC, which is like the boosters club at Cordova High, the Folsom Cordova School District, Stacy and Micah from our staff, myself, and yeah, that rounds up the crew. It's six or eight of us every meeting. We have now had, I think, three, three-hour meetings or so. We are making progress through a list of priorities for extracurricular, primarily sport activities at Cordova, and the discussions are very rich and very to the point in that room. I think we are making enormous progress in terms of getting all the data onto the table and sort of agreeing what it is and agreeing on what our challenges are. The next phase will be very interesting. It's trying to determine what's the priority in executing all of those priorities that we've identified. How do you rank them? School district right now is kind of doing like a technical analysis of all of them. They range from tiny little things to enormous things on this list. And I don't know, the school district says nothing like this has ever been done with them before. On the Folsom end of the district, they're not aware of other districts that have undertaken a project like this in terms of throwing all the potential needs on the table and having community members and the city and the school district also, you know, looking at it, trying to figure out, how do we get these things done and how do we rank them? So it's a very exciting process. I'm happy to be there representing you, and if you want any more information about that, please just let me know. That's my report.
Thank you, David. Linda, how are you doing?
Very briefly, Siri's comments about the Police Officer Memorial were absolutely accurate, on point, and yes, it was very moving. It is incredibly difficult to hear the wonderful parents stand there and talk about this marvelous young man that they've lost, that the community has lost. I was mayor that year, and it was so difficult to stand there in the middle of Cordova Lane with the sheriff and talk about, talk about the event. It's, I was reminded of it when you think about the procession for Sergeant G that occurred in Roseville earlier this week. Unless you've stood there or been a part of witnessing the amazing turnout of a community, everybody from the church lining the roads, everybody standing on the freeway overpasses between the end of the service for Mark at Bayside and the drive down to the cemetery. It is just heartwarming, heartwarming, validating, and so important to see that outpouring of community sympathy for these wonderful young people who served so richly and deserve so much. And then thinking of Cordova High, David, the only thing I will say is that we are looking for convertibles to drive in the Homecoming Parade on Friday, the first of October. So if anybody out there has a convertible and would like to come and drive in the parade, for Pete's sakes, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Donald, how are you doing?
Good. Air District meets this week. Right, yeah. Yeah, later this week. Yeah, I would echo, yeah, Siri, I think we all said kind of the same thing when we attended the funeral a few years ago. They, you know, that's the one thing you just never want to have happen here as an elected official, especially as a city council member. It kind of brought back a lot of those, those rough memories. But yeah, thank you to staff and everybody else that got that put together. I know it's been a while since we voted on. I couldn't even remember what the memorial actually was going to look like. It had been so long since we voted to allocate the funds. But yeah, thank you to everybody that was involved with that. An update from the STA Board last week, they got in their polling, and there will not be a ballot measure on the ballot next year. The polling looked actually a little bit worse than it did last year when they were looking at one for the fall of last year. Polling is probably 2% worse, so they're in the low 50s. With negative information there, I think they were in the very low 50s, if not the high 40s. For a two-thirds threshold, even a well-funded campaign maybe moves the needle four to 7% at best. And the odds of funding a campaign with polling numbers that look like that is slim to none. So it was unanimous to table the issue and put it off for at least two more years into the next election cycle at best. There was some polling that was done in there on the vehicle, abandoned vehicle and towing fee, which we are a huge user of it, and I think I shared that at one of our last, at our previous meeting. So separately, there may be an interest in trying to renew that fee this coming election cycle. That'll probably be at the next STA meeting. They were really just focused on, are they going to do a half cent or quarter cent or whatever? And that, there's no opportunity for that at the moment. Regardless of, I think, the interest on the board and at the agency obviously to adopt one, there's just no viable path forward at the moment. But there likely will be for that abandoned vehicle fee, which has never been on the ballot. It's been adopted by STA and by the general jurisdictions at council level and then implemented because of, I can't remember what ballot initiative recently, that they changed these fees to be considered a tax, therefore, they have to pass by the voters. And it looks very, very promising that that could pass, that when you explain to a voter what it is and what it would pay for, though a lot of them are very interested in supporting it upwards of well over two-thirds if I remember, but they, they kind of snuck it in, but they added in a couple of questions at the end of that, of the polling for the measure, for the bigger measure. They added in some for this, and they're going to, will pursue more conversations about that at the next meeting or before the end of the year. Yeah, David, I think Siri and I opened your butterflies because as we were leaving, they said they had a bunch of extras that they had to open. Because what they really did was, and what they had said on the website was that they weren't going to sell any butterflies on site, but they ended up not completely selling out of their stock of butterflies. And so right as we were leaving, some of us were asked to go open up extra boxes because they can't just leave them in the box for more than like another 20 or 30 minutes or bad things can happen in the boxes as they wake up. So yeah, so the way that event tends to work, if you haven't been able to attend it before, is it's like a, they give you like a 90-minute window, but you got to show up for the first 45 minutes and get your butterflies. And then everybody kind of stands around and waits until everyone has them, and then they all, they, you know, they say a poem and they open them. And that's kind of it. So it was a nice event, I will say. They did, they did two types of butterflies this year. They did the monarchs and then the smaller-looking monarchs, I think the painted ladies are the name of them. But the larger monarchs were honoring COVID, people that passed away from COVID. And then the normal day for this event is on grandparents' day, and those are the painted ladies that you would open, and they say a nice poem and talk about the importance of grandparents in raising children and stuff in the community. So it is a really nice event. So yeah, David, hopefully you can make it next year because it is a really, really wonderful event. And thanks for buying some butterflies, too. And Siri, thanks for coming. And the only other thing I'd say is, I attended my second Los Rios Colleges Board Meeting. They're still very appreciative of all of the work that we're doing when it comes to the Promise Program and honestly looking to replicate that at other schools and with other communities across the region. We really are a trendsetter and a leader when it comes to a lot of, obviously, we saw a lot of what went on with MOC, but within the community college, and it's about a 30-person board, they're all very aware of the investment that we've made. So hopefully, we can continue that in the year term. And that's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Donald. So on my end, first off, I had to speak at the dedication of Mark Stasiat. That was a tearjerker. Hopefully, I did it him right, and I think the city's doing right by him by putting that memorial up. It's amazing, and it's, it was very classy. I haven't seen a brushed, I think it was bronze, and it's, I think, one of my favorite, most favorite pieces of art in our city. And then I went to the Mark Stasiat barbecue after that to talk to all our, all our peacekeepers, and they're amazing individuals with interesting lives and always fun to catch up. Sacramento Library, I talked with them about how much it would cost and what it would take for us to get a library in actually the city of Rancho Cordova, and there's new monies out there. And so right now, we're trying to look at ways that the federal money can come over this way because they have a new grant program to the tune of 30 or 40 million, and they're trying to find ways to find it for other cities. I also did a 9/11 memorial at the Moose Lodge at their luau event, and I want to thank the Moose Lodge for inviting us at the city, and thank you for CRPD and Sacramento Fire for showing up that day. And of course, last, the dedication to Dan Skogland was well overdue, and I'm glad that the space will be branded with him because he's one of the fathers of the city. And that's all I have. And then I'm going to let over to Cyrus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I'll be very brief. Just wanted to bring to the attention of the public and also council members that we do have two vacant positions on our Oversight Committee for Measure R and Community Enhancement Fund. We had two people who left the committee, moved out, one of them moved out of the city, and the other person had some other commitments. So we're asking for volunteers, or we're asking any nominations for these two vacant positions. We also increased the size from seven to nine. So we have seven, seven adults and two students that are appointed by the school district. And the people we're looking for, the qualifications are to be over the age of 18 and be a Rancho Cordova resident and be a registered voter. Those are, those are the, some of the requirements. And the debt... And the deadline to apply and make the nomination is October 1. The only other thing I wanted to share, I think everything else has been shared, is that we also have been working very closely with the Sacramento County Health Office for assisting and facilitating bringing more vaccination clinics to the city. We had one today at Old Spaghetti Factory and another one tomorrow that would be held at the United Methodist Church. So we will continue this effort and make this, the vaccination clinics available to the community members as much as possible. So to make it easier for everybody to get their vaccinations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Cyrus, if I may borrow just a moment of the city manager's time to update you on a couple legislative matters.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Three bills of note passed, two on the land use side in S B 9 and S B 10 that we'll be writing updates for the council about and perhaps updating you in conjunction with the planning departments at future meetings relating to making it easier to do lot splits and also making it easier to, for the city to allow development and support development near transit. The other is the extension that we expected to the executive orders allowing the continuation of this sort of teleconference meeting during the COVID pandemic and also expanding that authority to potentially include other statewide emergencies. So we, going forward, will be coming back to the council under that new law, E B 361. We'll be coming back to the council every 30 days with an extension of the authority to continue doing teleconferencing so long as the state pandemic declaration exists and so long as there's a recommendation of social distancing. And we have already been in compliance with essentially all of the requirements of that. We've made one or two very minor changes that we'll be implementing going forward consistent with that new law.
Excellent. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. All right, so I'm going to move on to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are items deemed of a matter routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an individual item for consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. I'll start off by saying, is there any items council wishes to pull?
There are none. I'll move the item.
Excellent.
Second.
Can I ask the city clerk first for public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for these items, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Excellent. You got a first and a second?
The motion was Vice Mayor Terry.
Yes.
And the second was?
Linda.
Linda, thank you.
All right. And I ask a roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi. All right. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items may be approved in one motion. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing item and ask Stacy, is there any public comment?
The city clerk's office did not receive any speaker cards for this item or emails, and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public item. And are there any council that wish to pull this item?
Move item 10.1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Hi.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Hi.
Mayor Gatewood.
Hi. All right, since there's no public hearing items, we're going to move on to regular calendar items. All right, so we're going to start off with talking about the delicious straw hat pizza that we could all have if you would just have a piece, Darcy. So scrumptious. All right, Stacy, can we go ahead and hear about this item?
So item number 12.1 is the Discussion and Direction on reinstating a Planning Commission. And we have Darcy who's going to present on that. We've got a presentation, so give us just a moment to pull that up on the screen.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood. I'm sure your pizza was delicious. I opted for the healthy salad. Good evening, other councilmembers. Darcy Galart with the Planning Department. Tonight, we're going to continue our discussion on the Planning Commission. We're going to have some specific items tonight that we're going to request some direction from the council on. And the hope is that we get that final direction and we'll come back probably in late October for final action to reinstate the Planning Commission so we can move forward. Just a quick recap of our June 29 meeting. At that specific meeting, we talked about various rules and responsibilities of the council versus the Planning Commission. So we discussed what the council takes action on right now, which is pretty much everything that you see on the screen under City Council and Planning Commission rules and responsibilities. We provided some examples of how to divide those duties up. So on the screen before you is a recap of those duties. I won't specifically go through all of them, but the council will see some of our major items, such as general plan amendments, development agreements. They'll also hear anything in terms of an appeal from a Planning Commission and have final authority on all city-initiated public projects. The council took a look at what roles and responsibilities the Planning Commission could have, which is the list on the screen on to the right. So as proposed now, the Planning Commission would hear and decide any appeals on the Community Development Director level, approvals or determinations, hear and decide quasi-judicial actions such as conditional use permits, major design reviews, as broken down on the screen for you, tentative maps, variances, and any other duties that the council sees that they want to shift to the Planning Commission. So this recap is to really just go over as a reminder of this was what we heard from council at the last meeting. If council wants to make some adjustments to that, we certainly can. Please provide that direction to staff so that when we come back in October for final action, we will have all of the roles and responsibilities laid out. In terms of our topics tonight, the first one we're going to touch on is the actual structure. So our previous Planning Commission was made up of seven members. Five of those members were appointed and they resided within the city limits. Two of those members were at-large and they resided within the planning boundary of the city. So those are areas outside of our city limits that are within our planning kind of study area. What staff did in order to bring this forward so that we can provide you with a suggested recommendation of structure is took a look at how other jurisdictions are made up within our region. So with the exception of the city of Sacramento, which has 13 commissioners, which are all appointed, it's almost even across the board in terms of what folks do. So a lot of people do seven members, five that are appointed and two at-large. County of Sacramento and the city of Elk Grove do five members that are appointed. So what we heard from council, a few council members last time, is there was interest in potentially having seven members. So we are providing you with some examples of what other cities do. To continue the discussion on structure, if we're looking at the term of planning commissioners and how those generally work, this is pretty similar to how other cities are set up. Generally, if you're going to go with a seven member, the first five are appointed by each, by a council member and then voted on by the council. And two are at-large and they have usually a two-year term. So those members that are, let's say in this case, that are appointed or nominated or selected by individual council members, they, their term would coincide with that council member's term. That's very common in what all the other jurisdictions do. The two at-large members, you could do one year at-large. You could do two. You could opt to do more. You could have one be a two-year and one be a one-year. So you can make it as simple as you would like it to be, but these are just some examples. And in terms of the initial startup, in this case, based upon the current terms that we have for our council members, it would be a different sort of phase-in process depending upon when we actually have the commission appointed and selected. The next topic we're going to go over this evening is qualifications. So these are a few of the qualifications that we heard just some, some of the council talked about last time. So we've provided some more additional information. So the first one being residency. It's very common to require all your members to live within the boundaries or the jurisdiction of your city limits or a district. In this case, we're not district-based. So staff would suggest that all members be within, actually reside within the city limits. The next category would be some sort of professional experience. We're not suggesting that everybody have qualifications under professional experience. The council may opt to have two at-large have some sort of professional experience. So when we're looking at that, we're looking at a field that's closely related to development. Land use or environmental professionals, surveyors, designers, architects, any other skill sets that the council may identify that they want to fit under this category. An additional one that we didn't discuss last time, but we did receive some input on suggesting something from the League of California Cities is their values and ethics. They put out a Planning Commissioner Handbook, which we did attach a portion of that to your staff report. And some of those values and ethics that you could fold into the application process that somebody could demonstrate would be fairness, compassion, respect, responsibility, a vision for the city. So those are just some examples that you can kind of fold into that values and ethics discussion. Additional qualifications that you could have, so alternatives to any sort of a professional experience, is a demonstration or interest and desire in planning and development of the city. So these are things if the council would want to do would fold into that application process. Additionally, some sort of experience in a community leadership role or a committee role, how they engage with their community or their neighborhood association. So these are other alternatives to having professional experience as a qualification. The next item would be the selection and appointment process. So obviously, there's minimum procedures we would want to take a look at. So an application process, maybe a statement of interest that they might have and why they want to become a planning commissioner, some sort of level of background check and clearance, which is pretty standard and typical. Additionally, any other steps or in the process that council would like to be part of the selection process, staff would like to hear that this evening. Additionally, staff would suggest that in this case, each council member would nominate somebody from that application pool, which would then be voted on by council. Again, this is just a suggestion from staff, but council can opt to go a different direction. And then two at-large members would be selected by a majority of the council. So on the screen, this is my last slide, and then I will close out, is just the various questions that we would need feedback from the council on this evening in regards to structure and qualifications. The first one being, are we looking at a five- or a seven-member commission? And does the council concur that the terms of those planning commissioners that are nominated by each council member should follow the council member's term? And then what that term of the two at-large members would be? The next set of questions would be on the qualifications. So should the planning commissioner reside within the city limits? And would these, these planning commissioners be appointed or would the appointed or at-large members be, have specific professional experience or anything else? I lied. I have one more slide. I'm sorry. Estimated timeline. So we've adjusted this based upon continuing our conversation. So we're hoping to come back in October with final action, start that application process. The hope is to still have selections done in December to have the Planning Commission appointed and sworn in to begin a training process in January of 2022. As we had discussed at our last, or our workshop in June, is we would like to spend the first three months or so training the Planning Commission on various topics and then give them their first action item in April. And it would be a phased-in approach. So looking to, maybe we're going to phase in and only give them conditional use permits to start and slowly phase them in throughout the process. So that does conclude my presentation and I can answer any questions you may have.
All right. Stacy, is there any public comment?
The city clerk's office did receive one public comment via email that was from Donald Childs. It's been distributed to the city council and also made available in the back of the room and will also be available on our website. I do not have any speaker cards from anyone in the room and I do not see that there are any hands raised in Zoom or by telephone.
All right. So I think we should just grab each member and go down this. Do you want to start? Let's go with Siri. What do you think?
So I have a few questions in terms of the, if this is a planning commission that concurs with the council member. Some council members are up for reelection next year. So the board members that they do nominate, what, they're up for change at the end of 2022? If there's a change on the council?
Yes, that would be correct if the council went with what their terms are.
Yeah, I mean, we're putting in resources, time and money into these, into this planning commission. And so six months is a really short time to be investing. I mean, by the time they start to ramp, they got to start down, if that may be the case. So I'm concerned about that one piece, you know, how that. Though I'm not really comfortable with the council, the planning commission following the council because then they're, especially at this point of time. Because, you know, we have two members that are up for reelection. And that was a question I had. The other one in terms of qualifications. So I am pretty sure the ones that are at-large members should have some qualifications because the appointed or the nominated positions will be within the, should be within the city. But at-large positions, our members should have some sort of qualifications to guide the rest of the five members. These were my two questions and takeaways from these presentations.
Feel about, okay, so at-large members and specified professional. Okay, great. Do you, do you want the membership to vote on the person that you think? Or is it better just to have each of us put someone up and then we vote on the people at large?
I'm okay either ways. I mean, you know.
Okay.
If I have to pick, do we have to pick?
No, you don't have to.
Yeah, I'm okay either ways.
All right. Excellent. David?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of seven, sort of in a structure we had before. I would say the additional two would not have to live within city boundaries, but they should live within our planning area, which is sort of the traditional Rancho Cordova zone, zoning area, the old Cordova Plan area, et cetera. That allows us to pull someone in, should we so choose. We don't have to do it, who actually lives on our border and may be heavily engaged with our community but not within city limits. So I just think we would naturally want to keep that flexibility for just those two seats. Not to say at all that both of them would be from out of the city, but I would want to retain it as a possibility. I would think that this concurrence with the term is a little problematic. Maybe you could set it up that way after this first cycle. But give, give those new commissioners the idea that they're paired with a council member and even if that council member's not reelected, they can go into the next term. I'm not sure. That is really awkward. No matter when we would start this, that would be awkward. So yeah, I guess the alternative is you give them all two-year terms and discuss it every two years. Let's see. I do think that we should all vote on everyone's pick. I think that's a reasonable sort of safety step. If, for whatever reason, someone chose to appoint someone very problematic or controversial or whatever, I don't think this should rest just with a single member. I think it should be the council as a whole that's making the appointment, even though we could show enormous even though we could show enormous deference to a council member's pick. That's what I'm thinking about.
Okay. Linda?
Well, I'm not gonna make this any easier for staff, because I've got a third opinion. So I understand everybody's comments. I can't tell you how many planning commissioners, how many planning commissions I have appeared before in 30 years of representing projects around California and other states. We had seven members before. I totally agree that seven is a good idea. I also completely agree that five should be appointed by us as individual council members. In thinking about the person that each of us appoints, we don't need specific professional experience, because each of us will choose, as we have done in the past, a person that either represents our own philosophies, or represents something important for the city, such as community experience, or represents professional experience. But that will be up to each of us as council members from the list of people that applies to be on the commission. And I disagree with David about the two at-large members in that when we did this before, we were really only a couple of years into incorporation. And just as you will see on any of the city maps or aerials, we were very committed to returning the rest of the original CORPAK boundaries to the city limits. That has changed a little bit over time. We've matured. It's probable that those areas that are within the, the CORPAK boundaries and not within the city limits have not necessarily matured. And, and we may have lost touch with people who live in those areas, because we've been so focused on renovating, preserving and maintaining the areas within the city limits. So that would be a topic up for discussion, but my vote would be everybody, all five commissioners have to live within the city limits. And again, they do not need.
You mean all seven, right? Linda, all seven?
Yeah, I'm sorry, all seven. Live within the city limits, and they do not need professional experience. In terms, speaking to the issue of terms of these people, David has excellent, David and Siri both have an excellent point. Number one, training and phase in are very important to me, because it is so important that our planning commissioners not only learn the rudimentary knowledge of what they're supposed to do as planning commissioners. You know, just the whole concept of what is a use permit? Or, or what is a tentative map? What's the subdivision map act? That kind of thing. They need to know that, but it is, it is advantageous that the League of California Cities in January always does their seminar for planning commissioners and newly elected members of city councils. So they can attend that, and then we need to, to put our own spin on it to remind them that they are not just there as regulators, but they are there as facilitators, and that they are a huge part of our economic development activities in the city of Rancho Cordova. But I don't see that that's going to take a full three months. Give our potential planning commissioners a little more credit than that. But the problem is, and I think everybody will understand this, you don't want your entire planning commission turnover every four years. That is extremely problematic. So at, just like with the city council, so that's why some people got two-year terms and some people got three-year terms. Or, or, yeah, or, I didn't say that right. Do you know what I mean? So unless these planning commissioners really are all, their terms actually coincide with the person that appointed them, then we really have a problem. And, and on, and conversely, if we have new council members elected next fall, then that person coming on should have the opportunity to appoint a planning commissioner. So, so the answers are yes, 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 and no.
Okay. All right, Donald, what do you think?
And I'll be even different than everything else I've heard tonight. So I'm not as concerned about the professional experience and background. I don't, I'm, I'm going to guess that between the five of us, we'll think of maybe an attorney or an architect or a planner of some sort, I don't know. So I'm less concerned there. So my suggestion would be that, to address, I think Siri's concern, and David's to a certain extent, that, you know, we appoint these people and they, you know, maybe they start really working in, in the spring of next year. I'm not concerned about the timeline that the staff put forward. But maybe the initial appointment of the first five, and I would agree that seven would be the goal, but let me kind of explain how I think that the, the two at larges could work. I would, I would suggest we could appoint the first five. I completely agree that while we are each appointing and, or nominating somebody, let's say it that way, like we did with the Measure H Committee, that, that it is still a vote taken by the whole. To David's point, if there is somebody that is friends with one of us, or, or, you know, but is, but we all can agree is not somebody that would fit in, the rest of the council or majority of the council isn't comfortable with that person because of certain reasons or something, that, that that could be prevented from happening by the, by the, the rest of the council or a majority of the council. But that would, we could, but I, I guess what I would suggest is we could start with the formation of five for the, the planning commission. And then what you can do, and I'm not saying this because I'm vice mayor, but I would suggest that as a vice mayor comes into being office, comes into being vice mayor and being appointed vice mayor, they would appoint one commissioner that would have a two-year term that would then expire as they leave as mayor. Because our tradition, at least for now, has been vice mayor becomes mayor and then moves off. So their appointment would be on the planning commission while they're vice mayor and mayor. And then their appointment would come off, and whoever comes in as the new vice mayor would appoint a new person. So it would take basically two more years after starting this to end up with the full seven. But I think it's one way that you could ensure that you always had a fresh person coming in or likely to come in unless, you know, another vice mayor decides to reappoint the person that the person formed it. But I think it's one way to ensure that you have some change with, or you can have some change. Because I think one of the things that I heard, and again, I wasn't on council when this started, was there were individuals that were fairly difficult to work with, and instead of unappointing them, part of the motivation when there wasn't a lot of work for them was to just disband the thing. And so I think we want to be cognizant of that as well. So yeah, that, that would be my suggestion on how you get the at-large members. I would tend to agree with Linda. I don't believe any of these members should be outside of the city. While I don't necessarily disagree with David's motivation in including areas like Rosemont, other parts of our planning area, these decisions are made within the city, just like we don't live outside of the city. I don't think planning commissioners should live outside of the city. Especially because, I think to Linda's point, probably 18 years ago, there was an expectation that at some point that planning area was going to be the city limits. And 18 years later, that hasn't happened. And I don't necessarily know what if any, besides some of the open areas outside of the city, you know, the greenfield development that might happen someday, that, the, the way the state law is today, it would be very, very hard to annex in existing portions of the unincorporated county. So to me, I would say they, they all need to be within the city. And I would say allowing, allowing the vice mayor, and again, I, I'm not even saying for myself, I'll leave them foregoing. But to, you know, my suggestion would be to do that and allow those members to serve out while the, the mayor or the, while the vice mayor and, and then mayor is serving those terms, and then somebody else gets another chance to add one, one more each year. And then, yeah, I, I think I said this, I think we should start with an initial two-year appointment for these, for this first round. And then following that, that, that two-year introduction, we would move it into being aligned with the council members' terms. So somebody might appoint somebody this year, maybe they don't get reelected. Whoever that is that gets elected would only be waiting really another year before they can appoint somebody for three years. Or, or, or I guess another two years. So that would kind of be my, my bite at the apple of how to get to it. Think I answered all of that? Yeah.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Donald. All right, so mine would be, I like the seven. So that's a yes, so I think you got all council members were on that. I like Donald's idea of the two-year, and then if, then after that, it flows and follows whatever the council member that been incorporated. I think that all, anyone that we have on our planning commission should be part of our city. Those three of us that want that. I think that we have enough talent in the city to do anything we need. So we can find the land use attorneys or developer or whatever that we would have in the city that want to be a part of this. I mean, the, a major piece along with the planning commission being this is it's supposed to be our bat, or like our, our bullpen for council members. So they're going to learn about what it means to be a council member, all the amazing meetings that you get to take over and over and over, and all the super excited constituents that always want to visit you. And so I want them to actually get a taste of that, and that's one of those pieces. Also, I, I'm not really a fan of having the council members vote on the commit, the people that we pick, because I feel that if a council member picks him, it's supposed to be a representation of that council member. At least the five are up there. I think we should vote on the two at large, but I'm also, I really like Donald's idea that the vice mayor and mayor coming in should get their pick, and then on the way out, that'll, that'll keep a lot of new blood coming and going. So I would, I would, if they don't want mine, I would totally be willing to do Donald's. I think that's a, that's a great, great idea. And did you get everything answered from all of us at this point?
I did get everything.
Garrett, let's just. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Linda.
Let's just clarify one thing. The reason we disbanded the planning commission was the fact that there flat out was not anything for them to do. Period.
Okay.
Garrett, can I just clarify? Because you were agreeing with me, but I don't think you are agreeing with me. I wouldn't say the mayor would appoint somebody. So as the vice mayor gets sworn in, right, that's when they would appoint somebody. So let's say if we started this next year, so with the rotation, the way it's going, I believe Linda would be vice mayor. So she would get to appoint somebody, and then that would stay on for two years.
Right, and then it would go through the mayor. Got it, got it, got it. Yeah, I like, I like the idea of that every two years, new blood gets sworn in. I, I just like that idea of, I, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, every, every year, the new vice mayor would have a chance to appoint one person.
Correct.
One extra person.
Yeah, and then follow them till the mayor, through their mayorship, and then they would follow off. Yeah, I like your idea.
Well, maybe, or somebody could choose to reappoint.
Through the mayor, could I make one legal comment?
Can't even see you. All right, hold on, I want to see your face. And go.
Thank you. Just a quick comment about the, the relationship between the council members, particularly those who would appoint a, a commissioner and sitting commissioners. Just remember that your, your relationship with them and your mentorship of them will be at, at a general level. Legally, it can't always be at a project level, because very often you will be in the position of being the appellate judge of their decisions. So, so the relationship will be, again, general and sort of a distant mentor, not a day-to-day project advisor or director. Otherwise, you would potentially be violating the due process and appellate rights of applicants and, before the city.
All right, Stacy, I'm not Stacy, I'm sorry. Woo, Darcy, do you have all the pizza, I meant, ideas that you need or answers?
I do, Mayor Gatewood, thank you. You have provided all the clarification that we need to bring something back in October for final action. I believe I have consensus on all of the items. The structure in terms of appointment and how they would be coming in is a little bit different than what we proposed, but I believe we have consensus on how that looks. So we'll bring back what we believe the direction is, and we can always tweak some, tweak it if we need to.
Can I get the full thing a little bit, maybe even earlier than that, a couple of days before, so I can take a look at it?
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Moving on.
Can I actually, Darcy, I'm sorry. Can I ask, do we have consensus or a majority that, that wanted to have the council, the full council vote on the appointment? To like confer, confirm the appointment? I think two of us said we wanted to.
You have.
You have three?
You have four, actually, Donald.
Yeah, we have consensus on full council voting.
Okay, I, I thought I only heard two. Okay, thank you.
Um, can I question that? I know, I realize Darcy is running. Yeah.
Come on back, Darcy, you almost got away.
I thought I heard Donald say that each, or no, I heard Garrett say that each council member has the right to appoint the person that they want. And, and I strongly agree with that. If, if each.
Right, that's why I'm trying, I, I only heard two people, I heard, I agreed with David. That's all I really heard on that item. I have not heard.
Oh, that's right, and then, and then Siri chose both answers. So Siri, we need you to break the tie.
So two, two of us, two of us want to be able to pick whoever we want, with no questions from the rest of the council. Two of us, David and I, would like the, that there be a full vote by the, by the council on the appointment. So we should nominate somebody, but a majority of the council could override our nomination and make us pick someone.
The problem is, hopefully, each of us will have chosen a council member who either does bring some, some level of expertise that we think is important there, or, or somebody who, who we feel has a great vision for the city, or subscribes to our own perspective, and I outline mine, about economic development. And so I think it's a little cheeky if other council members don't like that person.
I would still say, personally, I would say if majority of the council is opposed, is like, to the point of voting no, then we should probably find somebody else. But that's, I think two of us have that position, two of you have your position.
Siri, what do you think?
Siri, I don't think you weighed in on.
Yeah, she said she wanted both. She said either would work, so. Yeah, she said she wanted both. She said either would work, so what's that?
I said I was open to both options, so if I have to break the tie, I'll go with the full vote. Because I don't think we will, you know, vote out a person for any other reason. I mean, you need a majority to say no to somebody, so if a council member brings a person that's fully qualified, that I, I don't see a reason why a majority of council members will say no. In fact, it, it, you'll make everybody happy that we got a planning commission that the council is all aligned on. At least three out of five.
Well, and hopefully, even just knowing that it has to go to a full vote may influence who you choose to pick. If you knew that I can pick whoever the heck I want and nobody can stop me, I think that may influence who you'd be willing to pick than if. I'm going to have to pick somebody that at least gets three people to, or two other people to agree with me, because it takes three to shoot it down, you're not going to vote against your own person, so. You, you need two other people on the council to at least agree with you to.
Were you going to say pick three to tango?
You know, I would, I would much rather have like a personal authority to put somebody in there and not worry about what anybody else thinks. I just don't think that's good governance.
Yeah, me too.
That's, that's just scares me a little bit.
Yeah.
Kamala Harris in the room to.
Alright, Darcy, so you got your vote, thank you. Run before he, run before someone says something else. Too late, hold on. Go ahead, Donald.
I guess I would, Mayor, I would add normally the, uh, the, the right to appoint is the same as the right to remove.
Yes.
Okay.
And did, did anybody else besides Garrett agree with me about the vice mayor picking the at-large? I know I was second to last to speak, so nobody else even said anything about it.
No, I don't, I, I don't see, I did not, I did not capture how that would work and why we wouldn't end up with an extra person every year. Seems to me that the council, the planning commission just continues to grow if you keep appointing another new person every year.
Well, they would have a two-year term. So it wouldn't grow, yeah, you'd add, you basically add six next year and then the following year, the next vice mayor would appoint another person to get it to seven, but their term would expire after their mayor.
So council, maybe we give this direction to Darcy to come with a few options on what other cities do at a situation like this, because, you know, there are many options that other cities are probably implemented. So would you take that action item, Darcy, to give us a few ideas? Prior to the meeting, like the mayor asked?
Yes, we can come back with that.
Okay, so wait, real quick, throw the questions back up real quick, so I want to make sure I answered all of them before I let you go and then come back up again.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if one of the person agrees with us, then we can do what I was suggesting, if not, then we've got to come up with a different mechanism. But I'm suggesting, staff doesn't need to bring us anything. We can decide today to tell them what to write up, or. I mean, the, the other idea is we, we all vote on the two, I guess.
Okay, so.
We can give them.
Right now, we've decided that we're going to do seven members, you got five on that. We have decided that there, if they get nominated, they're going to be two-year terms. That you, everyone said yes to that. And, and then we said, they, we had three people that said they wanted it to live in the city jurisdiction, so all seven have to be in Rancho. The only thing we haven't decided is the ones at large. We all decided that we don't care who the, how, what kind of experience they have. That's, that was decided. So last part is, is Donald and I believe that it's okay if the last two are nominated by the mayor, uh, the vice mayor. And then they would have a two-year term and then the next vice mayor would nominate someone else, which would then give it the other one in, and so we would, so on and so forth.
Garrett, back up a minute.
Go ahead.
Back up a minute, to that thing about everybody having a two-year term?
Yes.
And how do you keep your entire planning commission from turning over in two years?
You would then, because the council, council member would, oh. I was going to say the council member that appointed them would then appoint them again for another two years. But if the council member chose someone poorly and then was having trouble with them, or they were having trouble in the council, this would give him an out. So technically, you probably would keep him for four years, but Donald said we also could just extend it, but this first time would be two years, and then after that, we would go to four. So.
No, no, I was saying you, this first appointment would be two.
Right.
And then it would follow their term.
Right.
Then it would follow the council's term, so nobody, nobody's going to serve for like nine months next year, that's, that's the point. They would serve for two years, if there was a change in the council, then, then the new council member would be able to appoint someone new a year after they got elected. But going forward. The two years go away and it just becomes aligned with the council members. Term, just like I was suggesting with the vice mayor thing was, you make the appointment for two years and it lasts through your mayor, your, your vice mayor and mayor term, which right now is a two-year thing for us, or has been historically.
So.
Well, I'm waiting to see how staff writes that up.
Okay, David.
If nobody agrees with me, there'd be two at all. There's only two of us that have said that that's something that they support, so.
David?
Not, then.
What do you think?
Come up with a different way of doing it.
I think we could appoint the seven now, train them together. Give them terms that expire at different lengths. So, uh, let's see, in Donald and my case, and Siri, we're on a certain electoral cycle. Have that match up with us. Linda and Garrett, you're on a different electoral cycle, so you could have your appointees match up with yours plus the term or something like that. And, and hopefully that would give us the split, and then the additional, uh, two, I guess one would have to go on each, on each of those cycles, either A or B.
Okay. Siri, what do you think about it?
And those, that, that, that could be a somewhat difficult process to choose the two, because then all five of us could potentially be nominating the two, and we'd have to just vote to figure out who we're going to choose as the two.
That's what I was trying to avoid with.
Yeah, I hear you.
And, and it also. Well, it acknowledges the fact that, that somebody's going to be vice mayor and mayor for a certain period of time and kind of allowing for the opportunity for, for.
So this is only the two positions at large, and the vice mayor at some point would have already appointed another, one of the five members are chosen, so this, the vice mayor then appoints another one. Obviously, everybody gets that, uh, every council member gets that opportunity to choose two people then.
And of course, yeah. So for, for practical purposes here, that would be Linda making an additional appointment to the planning commissioner number six in the fall of this year. Is that right?
Yeah. And, 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 and what, if, you know, again.
And then me, I would make, I would make the next pick in the fall of the following year. That would take us to seven.
Correct.
And then the year after that, Siri, you're going to get to decide whether to keep or fire Linda's additional appointee. Of course, with the rest of the council has to.
This is not, again, we're investing money into each candidate, and so they have to, anybody who's appointed, we should think that they at least are there for that two-year term.
They would be.
Yeah.
At least that's the way I'm describing it, everyone would get two years and then it would go along council. The election.
So, yeah. So, I, I, like I said, I'm open as. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're having heard the, uh, some of the preferences that the council has, would you be okay if, uh, staff presented some matrix, I, I'm.
Yeah, like two or three options and we vote on it?
I think we're clear on the outcome that the council is interested. My understanding is that the council's interest is to make sure that nobody gets on the planning commission and only serves a nine-month term. So let us bring you some options for your consideration at the next discussion, and you can choose one of the options that best suits your desires.
Excellent. Guys, any other questions?
That was where we were fifteen minutes ago. Darcy, run!
Darcy, run. Thank you, Darcy. Wait, wait, one more question. Come on back. Alright, go have that piece of pizza. Alright, so let us move on to the next one. I'm going to let Stacy get all set up, and.
The next item is the discussion, twelve point two, the discussion and direction on parking policy updates and electric vehicle charging stations.
Stefan. See here. Oh, there he is.
Hey, Stefan.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Staff, my name is Stefan Heisler, I'm the Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. Uh, we're presenting, uh, here with me presenting this item tonight are Nick Brigakis and Paul Younger from Inner West Consulting Group. And Darcy Gullard, our Planning Manager, is also there in the room this evening. This topic, the, the Parking Code Updates, comes to us as part of the SB two Planning Grant Funded Projects, uh, which also included the Housing Element Update, which was adopted, as well as the multifamily housing design guidelines, which were adopted. So we're working through this last piece. Most of the zoning code updates that were funded through this project have been adopted as well. And, um, now we're working on, oh, now we're working on just this last piece around parking policy updates. This piece includes some portions that are required by state law, but also includes some voluntary aspects as well, uh, that we wanted to bring up and raise for any kind of council discussion or interest. So I'm going to pass it over to Nick, who will be presenting the item, and Nick, I've got the slides, so just let me know when you want to change slides. Nick, if you're speaking, we, we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Uh, go ahead, Stefan, thank you.
Uh, Nick, Nick, sorry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so the meeting agenda for this evening, uh, good evening, Mayor Gatewood, members of the council and staff. Will be to review parking strategies that we reviewed and created related amendments in the code. We will talk about Cal Green Electric Vehicle Charging Station amendments to the zoning code and give a summary and next steps. Next slide, please. Better inform, uh, parking requirements for the City of Rancho Cordova. Research was conducted on parking policies and regulations being implemented in California. Additionally, stakeholder interviews were held with commercial and office real estate brokers to discuss their current parking needs, parking supply issues, and future trends based on their experiences in Rancho Cordova, as well as other cities in the Sacramento region. Approximately a dozen parking strategies were reviewed and evaluated in this process, including the following strategies. Next slide. That determined that most apply in more urban settings, although several are appropriate in Rancho Cordova, which are shown in purple text. This includes reducing minimum parking space requirements for residential uses, as well as non-residential uses. Establishing maximum parking space requirements for all uses citywide. And providing parking reductions for new development near major transit stations. The city will likely evolve over time where it makes sense to implement the more aggressive parking strategies that are shown in black text. Next slide, please. Revisions were made to chapter twenty-three, seven-one-nine, parking and loading revisions. This included adjustments to parking standards for residential and non-residential uses, which generally were reduced. Some parking requirements for multifamily residential were lowered. This is only for studios, one-bedroom units and guest parking. Revised parking requirements within close proximity of a major transit stop also occurred. We have proposed allowing a twenty-five percent reduction of parking requirements within one-half mile of a major transit stop, or fifty percent within one-quarter mile of a stop. Today, the parking requirements may be reduced ten percent within one-quarter mile. We are also proposing to establish parking caps or, or maximum citywide. This means they cannot exceed a hundred fifty percent of the minimum required parking citywide, or exceed a hundred and twenty-five percent of minimum parking standards in the downtown planning area. Currently, the code has a maximum parking cap for uses located in the downtown planning area only, which is a hundred and fifty percent of the minimum standard. So I will explain how the parking maximums work with some examples. If a particular use has a minimum of four parking spaces per a thousand square feet, there would be a maximum of five spaces for that use allowed in the downtown district, that would be allowed. With four spaces per a thousand square feet for a specific use, a maximum of six spaces would be allowed in the city outside the downtown planning area, so citywide. Does the council have any additional policy direction to discuss?
Um, Garrett, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Linda.
Is there more to the parking discussion, or is this it?
There, there will be more.
Okay, I want to, um, at some point, I want to make the comment about accessible parking spaces, parking for people with handicap placards.
Okay. Well, maybe we should cover the next slide and then we can discuss it then. So additional revisions included, um, a new footnote being added to allow up to twen- two-hundred percent of minimum parking space requirements to accommodate a range of parking needs for office users. Those are uses in the office, business and professional use categories. For manufacturing uses, a new footnote was added to allow up to three-hundred percent of minimum parking to accommodate range of parking needs from traditional manufacturing to high-tech manufacturing. And also, a revision was made for personal storage uses, which revised it to require three parking spaces for employees, plus one space per one-hundredth storage units for the clients. And there was a footnote requiring loading spaces for internal storage units, where there's no direct access from drive-by. So now we can go ahead and ask for comments.
Okay, um, so, I actually have a comment on that last one.
Okay.
Parking spaces at the front door, parking spaces for clients at the front door of any of our storage units are useless. Because nobody parks at the front door and puts their stuff in storage. They go within the, the, um, the secure gates and park at the closest door that allows them to go to their storage unit or the elevator to access their storage unit or whatever. So I don't see that that has any value whatsoever. But, um, and that's only because we're talking about that one, but I do have a comment specifically about handicap spaces. Now that we are one of those families that gets to carry a parking placard around, I will tell you that that is a section of our zoning code that needs revision. There are, unfortunately, um, the majority of everybody is getting older and there are a significant more number of people with either, um, handicap plates or handicap placards, and and it is common to have legitimate parking, legitimate, um, users parked in all of those parking spaces, especially in places that are really, really popular, like the Commercial and Capital Village, something like that. There simply are not enough accessible parking spaces to go around. So that's an issue that we really need to look at.
Okay. Yeah, we can look at the requirements and see how they relate to state requirements and if we want to exceed them. We can look at some options for that.
I think everybody, everybody who is in that position would, would appreciate that.
Mayor, any other comments?
The council member, Bud, commented on the parking required at storage units. Currently, there is no breakout for storage units, and so what we have had to do is essentially find a workaround for a standard that requires far too much parking. The intention was that up to three spaces at the front office area would cover maintenance and office workers, and then some additional spaces, one or two, for 100 or 200 units, would cover those infrequent folks who come in and rent units and need to deal with the office. But absolutely agree that very minimal parking is needed at the front of a storage facility. And that was the purpose of that change.
So, in my experience, the majority of those spaces at the front of the building, if they aren't, and Paul's right, you know, for people who are coming to rent, then they, that's where they park. But the rest of those spaces typically get inhabited by containers or U-Haul trucks. So it's not really very valuable, Paul. Thank you for trying, but it's not really very valuable. Drive up and down the street, drive up and down Sunrise, you'll see what I mean.
And if the council still wishes, we can further reduce. We've greatly reduced the required parking at self-storage facilities, but if it's still too much, please provide direction.
Okay.
I would just say that, you know, some of these uses, in other jurisdictions, you may see people clamping down, for example, on how much parking should be allowed at manufacturing or high-tech office. And I think the discussion we just had here about personal storage sort of illustrates why a uniform across-the-board percentage wouldn't necessarily work. We have seen, at least pre-COVID, some tech offices where they were redefining how many people you could pack in a building, right? Buildings that we thought were way overparked, because the old Sacramento County standard, turned out not to have enough parking for some tech users who were planning on putting a bunch of people in cubicles and packing them in. So similarly with manufacturing, I think if the property is built for manufacturing, we should, and purpose-built for some purpose, we should probably allow their expertise to decide how much parking they need, as opposed to us trying to dictate it. Certainly, they don't have a motivation to build more parking than they want, so they would be the experts in that, really not us. I can imagine manufacturing scenarios where you need occasionally more parking than you would think, because they do occasional things, like have a trade show, or have a small event, something like that. We don't want our parking mandate to sort of wreck those sorts of uses. So I think this is a good approach.
Okay. Donald? All right, is there any public comment?
Yeah, I would just say no comment for me on this.
The City Clerk's Office did receive a written public comment via email for 12.2 that was sent to us by Donald Childs. It's been made available in the back of the room. It will also be available on the website, and it's been distributed to the City Council. I don't see any hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Stefan.
Pardon? Sorry, Nick, was there another section? Oh, yeah, there's more. There's more on electric vehicle parking. Next slide, please. The council has also prepared a new electric vehicle parking.
There we go.
Spaces section, Section 23, 719, 160, that requires the provision of electric vehicle parking. This draft section is based upon recent Cal Green requirements that are effective January 1st, 2020, which comes from Title 24, Part 11, Cal Green. Those requirements, at a minimum, have that electric vehicle-capable parking spaces be installed in new multifamily residential and non-residential projects, greater than 1,000 square feet, and alterations with a permit value greater than $200,000. The term EV-capable means requiring pre-wiring to accommodate future vehicle charging stations. This is the minimum level of improvement under Cal Green. Similar to other building codes, the city may opt for a higher level of requirements that will have the creation of a greater percentage of EV-capable spaces. In addition to referencing the requirements of Cal Green, the new proposed section establishes the following provisions for projects in Rancho Cordova. Compliance with EV parking space regulations, included in the review of minor and major design review applications. EV spaces can also be provided in any designated parking space, and such space shall be counted for the purposes of providing the required number of parking spaces for the use. And the Community Development Director may exempt projects from EV space requirements if it is determined providing such spaces is technically infeasible. Next slide, please. For new multifamily projects, a minimum of 10% of parking spaces must be EV-capable. In the table on the left, it shows the required percentage of total parking spaces that'd be EV-capable. But the city does have the option to have more restrictive requirements, and can go to different tiers. They could go up to 15% for multifamily dwellings, or 20%. And I want to remind you that all new residential construction as of January 1st, 2020, that is single-family townhouses or duplexes, all must be EV-capable. So for multifamily dwellings, it's just a percentage of the units. For non-residential projects, in the table on the right, the required number of EV-capable spaces are shown, and in the second column from the left, you can see that that is the required number of spaces per Cal Green for EV-capable spaces, and it gets triggered when you have 10 or more parking spaces required for non-residential use. So 10 or more spaces, you would have to provide one EV-capable space, and then if you have over 26 spaces, you would have to provide two, and so on. And again, here, you can go ahead, if you choose, to have more of a number of parking spaces be EV-capable, if you'd like, as you can see in options tiers one and two. This proposed code section, we have vehicle charging stations meets the state requirements. So the council does have the discretion to go beyond these requirements if they'd like. Next slide, please. In summary, a broad range of strategies were reviewed and considered. Proposed amendments are relatively narrow in scope, and we made a determination that most apply in more urban settings. However, an evolution towards more aggressive parking strategies in Rancho Cordova will likely happen over time. And there may be value in watching how things happened post-COVID to determine if employment patterns have changed, and how this may affect parking in the city for some of the uses.
Thanks, Nick. And I think, I think we heard, we heard the feedback from council on that section, too. So just, just to finish it off with the comment that on August 16, there was an indicated desire from the council to discuss electric vehicle charging stations. So the proposed changes that Nick has just presented do meet the minimum state Cal Green requirements, but we do want to open it up for council discussion if there's any policy direction to go beyond the EV-capable standards, or for any particular uses.
Before we do that, we're going to ask Stacy, is there any, wait, hold on. Is there any comment, Stacy, from constituents?
We just went through that Donald Childs was one person.
Yeah.
And we did not have any other speaker cards or hands raised in Zoom.
Excellent. All right, Linda, go ahead.
So I want to clarify what I, what I had originally asked for. Several months ago, when, when we started reading about goals by the, by the state or the feds, and a couple of articles appeared about gas station owners and installing charging stations. It sounds like Cal Green is probably the current term for the old California Energy Code, which I think is Title 24. And, and of course, they've added things like this. My original thought was that for all new and complete remodels of gasoline stations, we should require them to install, or we should simply make a development standard that they would install one charging station. Obviously, you can't go back and retrofit. That's not logical unless somebody wanted to do that. But in the zoning code, it usually euphemistically refers to these things as fueling stations anyway. So if you add an electric charging station, then it truly does become a fueling station. I completely agree with, with Inner West that it's important in multifamily. It's also important in shopping centers. And, you know, almost, almost every timeline at the Rayleigh's, there is somebody there charging their car. And of course, Broadstone has multiple Tesla chargers in their parking garage on the south end of the section that's got the theaters, that's got the theaters in it. Any way you look at it, the state is buying these things, Tesla is buying these things, Smod is buying these things, and you could be like Kaiser and go out and get one from Electrify America that just kind of plugs in and it fits there. But from my perspective, it's just a part of being, you know, ultimately being an energy smart city, and it's a direction we need to go. But I would definitely add shopping centers and gas stations to what they have been discussing.
So I'm going to ask the guys, do, does gasoline stations make sense to have a charging station on? Because most people don't go and charge at gasoline stations because you're stuck there for so long. Does it make sense only to put the standard at, like, grocery stores going forward? Or what is the, because I'm actually really interested in putting giant charging stations, because I know if the giant mega bill passes, there's going to be a place for a major charging station in the City of Rancho Cordova, seeing where we're sit. And a lot of people are going to have federal funds to be able to match them and put them in areas. But would you want it in a gasoline station going forward? Or is that, is that going to be outdated?
At some point, I'd like to comment on.
Let me offer an alternative, I understand your concern. Let me offer an alternate view.
Okay.
Most new gas stations are now being built in a shopping center or with retail space available. So you would go and get your coffee, you would go and get your grocery store, groceries while you're charging. And fast chargers don't take but like 20 minutes.
Okay. David, Donald, what did you?
I remember.
Donald?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, for, for freestanding gas stations, so let's take, for example, the one we just approved on International, getting started, International and Sunrise. I'm just going to say, I'm totally opposed to putting charging stations there. Now, then, at, where there's grocery stores and other things, I mean, at a minimum, it should be an activity that somebody's going to be out of their car for at least a meal, or 20, 30 minutes to go to the grocery store, we'll put it that way. People just will not utilize them, freestanding gas stations. Nobody's going to want to go to a gas station just to plug in and sit there for even 45 minutes, or 30 minutes. So it, to me, is completely a logical idea to do it there. Now, the Arco at Rayleigh's, or a Safeway gas station where they're, where they're going to go and do some other activity for an extended period of time. So restaurants, grocery, shopping, office space, home charging stations, I would even argue you could, you could entertain this in, you know, nearby park spaces, right? So for those of us that know, you know, we have more than one kid playing soccer, and we're going to be at the park for four hours, watching, you know, soccer, or Little League, or something like that, it might even make sense there. But freestanding gas stations, like ones on Tulsa Boulevard or other places where, you know, it's got a convenience store, and a, and a car wash, and a gas station, there, people are not going to utilize them there. They, we need at least putting them in places where the activity is at least 30 minutes or more. I actually Googled online, and I'm trying to find something that says a quick charge, and I'm seeing that, an article here that says it takes 36 minutes to recharge to 80% of a Level D, and I don't own an EV. But if we're, if we're even targeting 20, 30 minutes, you don't put them near coffee, you know, you don't put them near Starbucks, you don't put them there, you know, fast food restaurants, you would put them near sit-down restaurants, at a minimum. And so that, to me, is more of where we need to focus, and I definitely am not in support of a, a building standard for, for freestanding gas stations that only have like a convenience store within their parking lot.
David, what do you think?
You know, I've faced some aspects of this issue at the federal level, where the National Legisencies has been arguing, basically, as, as you guys have just discussed, that funding that became available through federal programs ought to support charging stations at places where people are going to spend some time. Ironically, Caltrans and, and the administration were preferring locations in rest stops. Okay? So if you're out.
Out there, right?
Yeah, so out and about, if you were going to, you know, charge your vehicle, then you would stop at a rest stop, a Caltrans rest stop, and stay there for 45 minutes while your vehicle recharged before continuing on. I don't know who was trying to think this out. That might make sense for a big, heavy, over-the-road truck or something. But for, for a road trip of any kind, or any kind of a distance, where you're going to have to charge to get to your destination, this is going to be a major change in how we view transportation, because now you're going to have these charging stops that you're going to have to make, and in some places, you probably can't even go, because the lack of, because the distances or the lack of, of charging. So I think this course is correct, and the only sort of cautionary light that I've got going on is, this market will sort itself out. And I'm all, I'm always a little nervous when we've got an outside force sort of dictating, this is how the market's going to be deployed.
Yeah.
Because that, we, we don't know. I mean, there's technology out there that says you take the battery out of the car, you put an equivalent one back in, takes five minutes. I don't know if that's realistic or not, but if that became the norm, then all of our charging stations that we mandated would be kind of dumb-looking, right? So we've just got to be really flexible with what the technology and the market comes up with.
I mean, David, to your point, we bought a vacuum last year, that we were considering one that had a docking station in the house, that the battery was internal to it, and we ended up buying one that uses the same batteries that all my power tools use. So now we have 15 batteries for a vacuum, right? If the technology changes, you're right, and you just go somewhere and pick up a battery and leave the one that you had, then yeah, all of this infrastructure was, was kind of a knock. And so, yeah, at this point, for what the, for, for what it is, you want them at least there 30 minutes to an hour or more, put them at every movie theater that ever gets open, right?
Right.
So number one, the, the little shopping center that's, that's under construction at International and Sunrise includes not only a convenience store, but also fast food. Number two, batteries in all electric vehicles are not interchangeable, and probably won't be for a long time. The entire bottom of our car is battery.
Siri, what do you think?
So I, I am in alignment with Donald, with Donald's reasoning. Also, you got to keep in mind that these electric car, vehicle, electric vehicle, whatever, these owners, the audience are actually, you know, they're, they're folks that are tending towards, you know, sustainable, eco-friendly. You have a certain. You have a certain audience that are actually taking these vehicles. And, you know, they may not be, they may not be the right audience to want to go sit at the gas station for long periods of time. So I am in alignment with everything that Donald said.
Okay. So Stefan?
Oh, except for the fact that I think they'd like to be uber cool and actually sit down at Starbucks and get their work done. So Starbucks having charging stations would actually increase traffic to those locations, so.
Currently, you can't sit inside of a Starbucks.
Well, yeah, but we're talking long-term. You can sit outside.
That's true.
All right.
There are some Starbucks students that sit inside.
Oh, yeah, actually, yes.
So Stefan, I'll swing back to you. Did you get what you need or are you looking for more direction?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have received direction that the council is well-aligned with the proposed standards. And we will look at some additional options regarding accessible vehicle spaces and bring the rest of these standards back for your adoption.
Perfect. Thank you, Stefan. All right. Last. All right, Stacy?
The last item on our agenda tonight is 12.3, Intergov Land Management System, Phase Two Go Live Presentation.
All right, Kim, tell us how you brought us into the 21st century.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Duran, Cara Giorgio, Administrative Services Director. And the purpose of tonight's presentation is to share with the city council and members of the public some of the highlights of the city's new land management system, Intergov. For those of you that may not know what a land management system is, this is a technology system that is utilized by our planning, building, neighborhood services, public works, and finance departments to process many day-to-day business functions, including all of the city's licenses, permits, plan reviews, inspections, code enforcement, and rental housing cases. So as you can imagine, with all those departments, a lot of stakeholders were involved in this project. And the implementation of Intergov has been a tremendous undertaking that has been in the works since 2018. The first phase of this implementation went live in March 2020 and brought the city's licensing functions online. And the second phase of this implementation included all those other processes that I just mentioned and just went live this August 2021. As you will hear tonight from a few of our department stakeholders, with the implementation of this new Intergov system, the city finally has the ability to offer online plan submission, permitting, inspection scheduling, and payment capabilities to the public. This new system has also streamlined back office processing and enabled greater efficiency in the field with the use of iPads and the Intergov app. So with that, I will turn it over to Jessica Crone from our IT department, who has served as our Intergov Phase Two Project Manager.
Jessica, before you start, can I check with council to make sure that they can see the PowerPoint presentation?
No, nothing's up.
So give us just a second to share the screen.
Although I'm bringing it up on my other computer, so I'm-
We're going to pull it up. Give us just a second.
We have IT right there. Go ahead and jump right in with the buttons, tab, tab.
Yeah, maybe you can keep going while Stacy brings it up.
Yeah, I have it up myself, so I'm okay, but.
I'll look behind Garrett so you can keep going.
Nice.
Will you advance the first slide, please? Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jessica Crone, Management Analyst in the IT Department. In this portion of the presentation, I'll be showing you our citizen self-service portal that we branded Rancho Cordova Online and talking about the new features that we've added to enhance the customer experience. Our online portal can be found at citoyofranchocordova.org/ranchocordovaonline. Some of the applications that we currently have available are business and pet licenses, temporary sign and use permits, all of our planning entitlements, encroachment, tree, and transportation permits, and even facilities room rentals. We're excited to offer these online applications. As previously, customers had to submit and pay either by mail or in person. So this is a great time saver for customers and they can now submit 24 hours a day. We do plan on adding building permits in the future, so keep an eye out for those. In addition to adding more application types online, we have added a feature that guides customers through the process of selecting the correct application type. Again, this saves them time because, one, it helps them determine if an application is truly needed. And if that application is needed, walks them through the steps of selecting the appropriate application type. In this example, it would show if the customer was inquiring about what type of license to get, they would select a business license. The system would go on to ask them more clarifying questions such as, is the business located in Rancho Cordova? Is the business ran out of the home? And after they answer these brief questions, it takes them right to the application that they need, again, saving them that time. We do offer other images and questions for the customer to help navigate them to our various permits and applications that we offer, such as a use permit, street use, or encroachment permit, and even tree permits. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Kelly Whitman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Whitman, Planning Division. So if a customer decides that they don't need the guided assistance, they can use the Apply button on the main header tab. They will be provided with a trending list of all the different application types. If the applicable case type is not within that trending list, they would select all and be taken to the full list of, depending on the application category. Customers are prompted to add a location, either an address or a parcel number. This feature is linked to the city's GIS. And applicants will not be able to move forward without applying, without a valid address or parcel number that's within the city limits. We have the ability to request additional information for the case based on the submittal type. Customers can upload attachments or plans as part of the submittal process. These files would then be electronically routed to the reviewers. Customers can track their project status via Rancho Cordova Online from submission through approval, as well as resubmit, pay fees, schedule and manage inspections. The data is real-time and updates after changes are made by staff in the back office. As you can see, this is a more detailed review of how customers can receive real-time data. And it shows the results of the electronic review process. They'll be able to access corrections, comments, and which files are being requested for resubmission. Now, we're going to move over to back office efficiencies for staff. Online submission allows staff to review the proposal and assign to the project manager to begin the review in a reduced timeframe. Electronic plan review allows all reviewers to easily access project files, which can be large in nature and traditional practices struggle with providing adequate access. Intergov provides integration with Bluebeam Review, which is a PDF markup tool. Staff can easily track the project's status, including plan review results and scheduled and completed inspections. Prior to Intergov, we required customers to submit multiple hard copies of the project plans. With Intergov, the plans are submitted and routed electronically, greatly reducing the amount of hard copy paper plans the city receives and handles. Plans were manually routed and tracked to departments. With electronic plan review capabilities in Intergov, staff can review and add comments and corrections in the back office and utilizing Bluebeam, increasing the efficiency of the plan review process. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Kelly. Mayor Gatewood and council members, my name is Kevin Chin, Assistant Civil Engineer for the Public Works Department. Intergov also allows field inspectors to utilize iPads for inspections, making it easier for documenting corrections and reviewing plans in the field. Some efficiencies that we noticed and are worth noting is the accessibility of all the information, such as project information and past inspections. Intergov also allows the use of Bluebeam to be used for digital review and approval of plans. For example, this allows staff to save time when we are stamping plan sets in for review. The before picture shows a staff member manually stamping each sheet. And then the after picture shows how quickly plans are being digitally stamped. This screen is the summary screen for a permit or plan which is seen by city staff and shows all the steps and information of the project. The progress wheel to the right of the screen shows a visual of a project completion and to the left shows the most recent activity within that project. This screen shows all the steps needed to review and approve an application and close out the project. You can see the four steps to the left, review, issuance, inspections, awardee face, especially for a encroachment permit. And to show a more elaborate view, the review of the process allows for plan review and resubmittals through Intergov. It shows you who is assigned to the review, the status, and the due date of the review. Another key feature to mention is the communication feature of Intergov. Intergov shows all the actions taken in processing the permit. It also allows for electronic communication via online and automated emails. In case someone needs to revisit a project for its history or it sits idle for some time, instead of having to dig through all your emails, everything gets documented within the communications. And now I'll hand it back to Jessica.
Thank you, Kevin. In addition to those back office efficiencies, we now have improved efficiencies out in the field. Our building inspectors and code enforcement officers, as well as other departments, are utilizing the iPads and our IG apps. They're using a map feature that utilizes our own GIS. They can see their scheduled inspections for the day on their home screen. They can even create proactive cases while out in the field. And a feature staff is really enjoying is being able to take photos directly on the iPad and have it attached directly to the case. Another benefit to the customer is that while the officer's in the field, if it's a code enforcement or building inspector, they can email the customer a copy of their notices right then and there. Here's a great picture of our building department utilizing that feature and attaching a photo directly to their case. We've streamlined the inspection process and it provides a step-by-step guide for inspectors and code officers to use so they know exactly where they are and what is the next step to progress the case. As you can see, formerly, all the departments used to manually print out all of their inspections for the day. Now they can go right to their iPad, pull up the home screen, see all of their inspections, and again, utilize that GIS to have pinpoints on the map that show them exactly where they're going throughout the city for their daily inspections. We've enhanced our data search capabilities as well. We've reorganized our case types and made it more efficient. Another interesting feature is that we can search by our custom fields, which allow us to get more specific, detailed information, which in turn helps us be able to make better use of the data in the decision-making process. I will go ahead and turn it back over to Kim. Thank you, Jessica. So to close it out, I want to acknowledge the key staff members that you see listed on this slide have been heavily involved in the implementation of this Intergov project since the beginning. So really, the last three years of their lives, they have been working on this project. In addition to continuing to do the day-to-day responsibilities that each and every one of them has, continue to have. So this was no small accomplishment. It's a continuing work in progress as we hope to continue to build on it and improve it. But I do want to make sure that we do acknowledge the hard work and effort of everybody on the city team to bring this system to life. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
So first off, I want to say amazing job. I know how hard it is rolling out a CRM and a new type of database system, especially Intergov, because I've done it for other groups. And so good job on this. Very exciting to go from, we were at one time, no one knows it, but we were using a architecture company software to try to do all the bidding and billing and all that stuff. So I know this has been a big push from a lot of our business owners to have our city be more friendly and on this type of thing. So great job to you and your team, especially the IT nerd. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
You know how hard it is. I appreciate you. All right. Besides that, council members, do you have any other things to say?
No, this is great. Thanks, Ken, and team.
I feel like we-
Yeah, I would just congratulate staff on an enormous project. The number of years involved in this is amazing to me, but good work, great progress.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, I would say, these are the hardest things. They're not sexy. They're not, you know, we don't do a ribbon cutting for them and that kind of stuff. But they really do improve people's lives and especially businesses that are interacting with us. And, you know, it's only been 18 years. And yeah, we started off with the horse and buggy technology. And, you know, these are the kinds of things you have to stick your guns and actually implement. So thank you for all of your work on it.
Yeah, and I do find it extremely sexy. So that's just Donald. Super sexy.
So Garrett, I have just one question.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
There was one sentence about Intergov making it possible to easily route applications submitted to city departments. Do we have the same interface with the outside agencies that provide services to us? Like Metro Fire or Regional Sand or whatever?
Yes, so to answer your question, we don't currently have it set up yet that way, but we do have the capabilities of getting there. So that is part of our plan as we move forward into what we like to call Phase Three, sort of the add-on that is part of that next phase.
Okay, well, I would add, believe me, I would add my compliments to everything that the guys have said already. That, you know, the reason, quite frankly, the reason I stopped processing building permits was the fact that Sam's Club and Walmart plans were 48 inches by about 60 inches. And they broke my cart that I used to use to carry plans around the various jurisdictions. And I said, okay, I can't do this anymore. It's a huge advantage, and I know it's a huge advantage to staff, but it's probably important we remember that it's a huge advantage to property owners, building owners, and people who are, like the contractors who are trying to coordinate all this. So often jurisdictions get criticized because of the length of time it takes to process a set of plans, whether it's a planning project or a building department project. And unfortunately, so often, the issue comes down to the fact that the architects or the engineers did not make a timely submittal once they were asked for a resubmittal. And when you put everything online like that and it can be emailed around to everybody, then there's never any question about where they are in the process or what is needed because it's all right there on your computer screen in black and white. And I realize you're right. It's probably been 2008 since I had a project anywhere. But on the other hand, this is such a far cry from where the whole submittal and approval process was when I left it, that this is an enormous, this is light years ahead. This is just really remarkable. And I see Cyrus completely agreeing with me, having been on the same side of the applicant table as opposed to the approval authority table. I can see Cyrus agreeing with me. So congratulations, guys. Wonderful, really, just wonderful, all of you.
Do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office did not receive any public comment for this item. Is there anyone in Zoom or by phone who would like to make a public comment related to this item? I do not see any hands raised.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say-
May.
A couple of words. Uh, um, thank you, council, for acknowledging staff's great work on this. This has been a significant undertaking, as you can imagine. Uh, we have, uh, taken a number of technology initiatives under, um, consideration. More is to come. So thank you, Kim. Thank you, team, for a job well done. And this truly brings us to the, to, to the twenty-first century. So appreciate the work you've done and, uh, expect more. It's on the way. We will be doing some, uh, great things in the coming months.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. All right. Do any of you council members have any future agenda items?
I have a rather unusual one. I am not sure we have ever, uh, done this before, but, uh, find myself in an odd position of having to do it. So we heard a cell phone tower proposal, uh, a couple of times. It was a tower that ended up having a rancher of a logo-like image on it between the Target and the adjacent, uh, grocery store. Uh, I, uh, I attempted to engage staff with a discussion about what that final design was gonna be because, uh, we had talked about the color's not right, maybe there's a different design, and certainly the, the materials and the, the design of the base were, uh, were not acceptable as presented, but we said, improve that. And we just wanted to get it passed, and so we, we sent it on. Uh, staff don't believe we have the ability to significantly modify that design as it was presented. And so in order to do that, I have no desire to reopen the, the debate on the cell tower itself. My only concern is that if something's gonna be built here and it's gonna be there forever, at least probably for all of our lifetimes, that it'll all look really good and be an asset, as opposed to just some graphic that somebody threw up there to get it done quickly and, okay, we're done and we're gonna look at it for the next eighty years. Um, so what I would like to do is a motion to reconsider simply the design element of what the sign, the graphics look like, um, and leave the, the approval of the facility in place. But apparently, in order to have that discussion about the design, we would need to move to reconsider.
Move to reconsider.
We would need to agendize this.
Right, that's the point of it.
Okay.
You have to do this to agendize it.
Okay.
And a motion to reconsider is in order only by a member who moved in favor of the item, which I believe Mr. Sanders did.
Okay.
For the council's reference, a motion to reconsider can only be made, it can be made by somebody who opposed to the, the action of the, the body. But here, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember Sanders voted in favor of the approval.
I did.
So a motion to reconsider would be in order by he and other members who did so.
And can we do that tonight or do we need to declare it an item that came up of an emergency nature?
You would, you could move to, to place an item for reconsideration on the next agenda or on a future agenda.
Okay.
Cyrus, do you have any comments about this item, this issue?
So we're gonna need-
I, I, yeah.
So we'll need three people. We got Linda and David. And then, am I allowed to be one of those people or am I not? Adam?
No, you can.
Uh, so we have a, uh, of, 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 the request is that i- if you have a motion in a second to propose that you add it to the next agenda, then you would vote on that motion. You could have a motion to add it to the agenda that was made by Councilmember Sanders, seconded by Councilmember, by Linda Budge, and then you could vote on that together. Cyrus, do you have any comments on this topic? No further comments, no.
Okay, you throw it back on the agenda.
We need to vote.
Uh, do you wanna make a, uh, do you wanna vote on that proposal?
To put it back on the agenda?
I think the, uh-
I think, I think we have, we have, we have a threshold of three, which is our standard.
So the clerk, I might suggest that you take a roll call on this.
Stacy?
Um, because it's a significant issue for the applicants.
Stacy, let's take a, take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Same.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yep. All right. Anything else for the-
Very good.
Anything else for the good order, guys? All right, our meeting's adjourned.